Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303 or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of Internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638 or meganet.net.
This is the Monday, February 11, 2019 Board of Selectments meeting. The board just returned from a site visit to the Edward Marx Building at 744 Main Street and the old Senior Center Building at 300 Dillingham Avenue. I want to call this meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition, Ms. Braga.
Sure, just somewhat a personal matter, but I just wanted to recognize, I had a family member who unfortunately passed away last week, but was able to receive really just some phenomenal end-of-life care at Falmouth Hospital. And her situation was tough in terms of her insurance and the social workers and the staff and the physicians at Falmouth Hospital really just went above and beyond to make sure that the last days of this individual were just as pain-free and as comfortable as possible. And I know we kind of sometimes take for granted that that hospital, there are many people in this room who remember when we didn't have a hospital. And if you were born in Falmouth, you were being born at Toby. And so to really have that resource and for all the care that they provide to this community, and again, you know, they really do feel that they're part of this community. So it's not something where they're just checking boxes, but really reaching out to individuals, reaching out to families. So huge thank you to that community at Falmouth Hospital for all that they do and just for the way that they're really integrated fully into our community here. So, thank you.
It's so important to a lot of people. With respect to announcements, I just want to start by reading some correspondence from the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority. There had been earlier a meeting, by way of background, for a new, really amazing bus that's coming online in Falmouth as the community that's going to be the, you know, the lucky user as it's coming out. But the folks at the meeting and later on Woods Hole community had some concerns with the initial plan starting a change from one bus to the other. And there was a thought that that might deter some folks, especially folks who are here in the summer, from making full use of that service. So we did receive from Tom Care, who's the administrator of Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority, "Thanks for voicing your concern relative to the Cape Cod RTA proposed transportation improvements planned for the summer of 2019." As you know, the plan we presented January 18 at Falmouth Town Hall was intended to create efficiencies in our service as well as provide better access to and from various population centers, the courthouse, and the hospital. I've heard from several other individuals, including myself, primarily from Woods Hole, also Sam Patterson, who now serves on our advisory board, also expressing concerns. "We have decided to continue to send the wish trolley down to Woods Hole as requested. We will be developing the schedules over the next few weeks and months, but wanted you to be aware as you were first and somewhat vociferous in asking us to reconsider. We appreciate your ongoing support and assistance here at the RTA." So for those, the initial discussion was that the RTA would work with the community and then the administrator has now taken some time to send that in writing to allay any concerns of the community. So thanks to the RTA for that. Any other announcements? Doug?
I think so.
In which case, we'll move next to public comment. Public comment. Mark, while I'm explaining it, come on up. It is an opportunity for members of the public to have two minutes on an item that is not on today's agenda. Welcome, Mark.
Good evening. Mark Finer in Precinct 6. I'd just like to read something out of the latest evaluation of our town manager. There were about 25 areas that were rated in and there were room for everyone to put supporting examples.
I'm going to stop you just for a question. I don't believe personnel matters are allowed to be part of announcements.
It's a public comment.
Does anyone have a...
That's how I read our policy we established last week, that personnel matters are not a part of public comment.
Yeah, sorry, Mark. We're going to have to defer that. And if you'd like, we'll be happy to get it in.
No, no, it's fine. It was just, anyway.
Mark, I'll get a...
It was just a small part of it.
Is there another subject?
Yeah.
Sure.
Relative to fires putting out. Couple of years ago, I was here and I brought forward an example of some problems that were going on in the Housing Authority. They were attended to and person was replaced and problem solved, so we thought. I have known numerous people that live in the Housing Authority's buildings. And I have a friend, I happened to notice that the unit next to him was empty. So I asked him a couple of months ago, "How long has it been empty?" And he said, "Well, over a month." And it remains empty now. So I went and checked around a little bit and I found, and you know, don't quote me exactly, but there's time where people are homeless looking for housing of any sort at all, going off Cape to live and still work in Falmouth. It seems like for over three months, there have been somewhere in the neighborhood of 12 to 14 units that have been empty, not rented. And with a waiting list as long as your arm, it seems just completely out of control. There appear to be three at Harborview, three to four at Taticat, three or so at Rose Moran. And we have, the town has 25 705 units, which are individual houses. I have one beside one of my rentals, all over town. And it appears like that some of those are empty as well. This seems to be a problem that should be attended to. I mean, as I said, people moving off Cape because they have nowhere to live and we have, you know, a dozen or more empty units for three months or greater. Somebody ought to look into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Malcolm?
Good evening. Malcolm Donald, 124 Ambleside Drive, Precinct 6. I have two topics I'd like to talk about tonight. Number one is the wind turbines, relates to wind turbines. The $3.5 million owed by Falmouth to the Mass Water Resource Authority for the wind turbine debt will be a $3.5 million windfall to the state of Massachusetts. The original $5 million loan came from the federal government era, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. And somehow it got channeled through the Water Resource Authority and it got turned from a grant into a loan. And that loan had a stipulation that it had to be paid back if the turbine's blades didn't turn. And that's where we are as I speak. Now, Congress subsequently voted, and this is in the Federal Register, to relieve any payback obligations on that $5 million. Therefore, when the town of Falmouth, when and if they pay the, we pay, the $3.5 million back to the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, it's going to be a $3.5 million windfall for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I want to ask, how sweet a deal is this? My second topic, we're in the nascent stages of putting together a tree campaign to plant trees in Falmouth. I had some success getting rid of styrofoam in town meeting and I put an article on the warrant and we had people that came out of the woodwork who were very passionate about getting rid of styrofoam and we got rid of styrofoam and it's great.
Malcolm, we're about out of time.
Okay. I'm just hoping that people who are passionate about planting trees, trees in Falmouth anywhere, will come out and join this effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. My name is Ron Swig and I'm your representative and been appointed to the Cape Light Compact. And I'd just like to let you know also that all 21 towns on Cape Cod and the Vineyard voted, recently voted me Chair of the Cape Light Compacts Board of Directors. And so I just wanted to be sure you're aware of that, which is a nice way. It's a little more to do. But anyway, I just wanted to talk about the energy efficiency program. I encourage everyone to join in or take part in energy efficiency of your homes or your businesses. And this applies to, including rental properties. And the compact has programs, you can call the compact at 800-797-6699 for an audit of your home and they will come in and help with insulation as well as changing light bulbs, et cetera, all kinds of efficiency evaluations of appliances and providing incentives. For low-income housing, there's a program through the Housing Assistance Corporation and their numbers are 508-771-5400. And I think, so this is good for low-income houses, get actually better incentives, more financial support for their, for the energy efficiency activities. So I encourage everyone in town, it's all part of, it's charged on our electric bill, so you might as well take advantage of it. I recently had one done, another done of my home after about 10 years and it was very instructive. So I encourage everyone to participate in that. I just want to say too that the Cape Light Compact is fighting for your interests in Falmouth and across the Cape with regard to the Department of Public Utilities and certain orders that are under consideration now to assure that we get the best deal possible for, in support of our community. So, thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else on public comment? Next we have on the agenda, under summary of actions, licenses, whether to approve an application for change of name of an all-alcohol common victual license for Celestino's Doing Business as the Talk located at 444 North Falmouth Highway in North Falmouth. Is anyone here for this application? Please step up and introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm Juan Celestino Prater, Jr. I am one of the assistant managers at the restaurant. My dad's the owner, it's under him, I guess would be the answer.
Great. And you want to change the name?
Yes. When we, we've been there for five years now and we started off, it is our middle name, so we tried to do the family name aspect of it. But it has become synonymous with kind of like Italian food and that's not really the food that we were making per se. So with that being said, we wanted to do a new look, menu vibe type thing. It would still be the same management, everything, but it would just be like a new look, I guess.
Great. Any questions from the board?
Nope.
Is there a motion?
I move approval of the change of name.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing the menu.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have whether to approve an application for a lodging house license, Triple S Hospitality LLC, DBA Inn on the Sound located at 313 Grand Avenue. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself.
Sure. I'm John Saunders. I'm the manager of Triple S Hospitality and I plan to continue to manage the Inn on the Sound in the same fashion that it's been managed for, I don't even know how many years. 30, I guess.
Great. Any questions from the board?
No changes?
No changes. Gourmet breakfast.
Great view.
Fabulous accommodations, yes.
Right. So you're not changing the view? Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Next, under administrative orders, whether to approve the grant of license to Buzzards Bay National Estuary Program to install and maintain monitoring well within the Herringbrook Estuary behind Old Silver Beach Dirt Parking Lot in North Falmouth. Is there someone here to present, Mr. Suso?
They were invited. I don't know whether we have a representative here.
I can give a 30-second if you like.
Sure, please.
So this is pretty much as it reads. The proposal is to install some monitoring wells to monitor sea level over longevity study at a defined point. It's all been cleared with Conservation. They have a, whatever the technical name of the approval is, I'm not going to guess and get it wrong, but it has received Conservation Commission approval and it has been reviewed by Town Council as well.
Great.
Ask the question. It looks as though they're associated with the Massachusetts Coastal Zone Management Department and is that correct? Is this a government group?
It is a, yeah, it is a collaboration with Buzzards Bay and the State Agency.
Buzzards Bay, meaning what we're going to say?
Sorry, coalition.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
And with that, is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have whether to approve a request for waiver of building permit fees for Nobsko Keeper's House/Museum renovation construction. Is someone here from Nobsko? Come on up. Welcome, Ms. Bumpus.
Thank you, Ms. Moran. Kathryn Bumpus, Executive Director of the Friends of Nobsko Light. We're getting ready to do the rehab on the house and as we've been sitting with town officials over the past couple of years in the planning phases of this, Julian one day mentioned that we might be able to have our building permit fees waived, which is something that we would very much appreciate because it's a significant amount of renovation work that we're doing on the structure. So I'm here to ask that you consider doing that.
Are there questions from the board?
Just, I guess our policy is that there's some fees we can waive, which I'd make a motion that we go ahead and do so, but I think there are also some fees that have costs involved that we just can't waive on those. And I think you understand the policy on that.
So my understanding is that the permit fees themselves can be waived and the inspectional fees cannot. So we're quite clear on that.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate all your work. Next item on the agenda is for special events, recurring recommended, the Easter egg scramble for the Falmouth Village Association will be at the Library Lawn, Peg Noonan Park, Saturday, April 20, 2019. Move approval? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have, please.
We do have A through Z. Do you want to read through them and if we have an objection, otherwise we may be able to do it as one motion?
I think that'd be a good idea.
All right, I'll do the first half. You want to do the second?
Sure.
Next, we have movies in the park, Falmouth Village Association, Peg Noonan Park, Wednesdays, July 3, 17, 24, 31, August 7, August 14, 21, and 28. Bike parade, Falmouth Village Association, St. Barnabas Lot to Mullen Hall School, Main Street to Shore Street Extension, Thursday, July 4, 2019. Concerts in the park, Falmouth Village Association, Peg Noonan Park, Thursdays, July 7, 12, 19, and 26. Arts and Crafts Street Fair, Falmouth Village Association, Main Street, Post Office Road to Shore Street Extension, Wednesday, July 10, 2019. Holiday stroll, Falmouth Village Association, Queens Byway to Main Street to Shore Street Extension, Peg Noonan Park, Saturday, December 7, 2019. Seagull Six, Spring Classic Road Race, Falmouth Track Club, start and finish at Woods Hole Community Center on Water Street, Sunday, March 31, 2019. Liam McGuire's Irish Pub, Almost Five Miler, PCB Race Management, start and finish Town Hall Square, Sunday, May 5, 2019. Spring at Spoor, formerly Daffodil Days, William Kerfords Boar Gardens, Fells Road, Saturday, May 18, 2019. Falmouth Farmers Market, Lindsay Close, Marina Park, Thursdays, May 23 to October 10 and Tuesday, November 26, 2019. Falmouth June Jog, Melissa Keefe, Falmouth Heights Beach to East Falmouth Elementary School on Sunday, June 2, 2019. The Classic Car Show, Falmouth Classic Car Club, Marina Park, Sundays, June 9, July 14, and August 11 in 2019. And the Arts Alive Festival, Arts Falmouth Inc., Library Lawn and Shore Street Extension, Friday to Sunday, June 21, 22, and 23.
I move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Following along, the Jazz Stroll, known as Jazz Tober, Arts Falmouth Inc., Queens Byway along Main Street and Peg Noonan Park on Saturday, October 19, 2019. The Run Jack Run, Family Run Walk by Samantha Mueller, Jack's Pack, Trotting Park Soccer Field and Track, Thursday, July 4, 2019. The Falmouth Sprint Triathlon, New England Endurance Events LLC, Surf Drive Beach, Sunday, July 14, 2019. Rockin' Recovery Concert, Recovery Without Walls at Old Silver Beach on Wednesday, July 17. Butterfly Garden Day, William Kerfords Boar Gardens, Fells Road, Saturday, August 3. The Falmouth Walk, Town Walworth, Town Hall Square to St. Barnabas, Saturday, August 17, 2019. The New Falmouth Road Race, Jennifer Edwards, Falmouth Road Race, Woods Hole to Falmouth Heights, Partial Use of Crystal Beach on Sunday, August 18. Rotary Club Craft Fair, William Kerfords, Falmouth Rotary Club, Banshell and Marina Park, Saturday, August 31, and Sunday, September 1. The Wounded Warrior Project Soldier Ride, Cape Cod, Carol Kenny, Falmouth Military Support Group Bike Path, North Falmouth to Woods Hole, Back to North Falmouth on Thursday, September 12. Striper Fest On The Water LLC, Marina Park and Banshell, Saturday, September 28. The Zuma Women's Half Marathon in Tengay, Sarah Ratsliff, Old Silver Beach Lot, North Falmouth, Sunday, September 29, 2019. And the Cape Cod Marathon Kids Fun Run, Jack O'Farren, Falmouth Track Club, St. Barnabas Church Campus, Sunday, October 27, 2019. And finally, Falmouth in the Fall Road Race, Don Facey, Woods Hole to Falmouth Heights, Sunday, November 3. I move approval of those.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I just pointed out, on the Cape Cod Marathon Kids Fun Run, the marathon itself, we had already approved at an earlier time. Just adding to that.
Next, we have new recommended. Ms. Braga, do you want to go through those?
Sure. We have grave marking, David S. Martin, Sons of American Revolution, Cape Chapter, Old Burial Ground 8, Cemetery Lane, Off Mill Road, Saturday, April, excuse me, May 18, 2019. Nebason Bass Fishing, Joseph Russell, Kuna Mesip Pond, Parking in Dirt Lot, Sunday, July 14, 2019. Coast Fest Concert, Luke Voss, Banshell, Saturday, August 3, 2019. Kathryn Lee Bates Poetry Birthday Festival, Falmouth Historical Society, Falmouth Public Library and Library Lawn, Monday, August 12, 2019. And Wedding Ceremony, Kathryn Walsh, John Stasic, Bristol Beach, Saturday, 9:21, 19.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Under business.
Are we doing late entries or is this?
Pardon?
There was, I have two more on sheet.
I think there's an updated, those were included in, they're on here. We just read them. They were the Kathryn Lee Bates Party Festival.
Oh, okay. Excuse me.
The way we got them on our agenda has been updated.
Yep, they're integrated already.
Yeah, I saw the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Next, under business, we have an update and discussion on the status of four town-owned buildings. First is the Edward Marx Building, second is the old Senior Center Building, the third is the Emerald House, and the fourth is the Andrews Farmhouse. And I just want to thank the town staff and the individuals who helped us tour those buildings. Falmouth Preservation Alliance members were at the Marx Building and at the Senior Center. Of course, Jill Bishop was very helpful in giving us the tour of those. And next, Peter will present. Thank you.
Sure. So I thought I would present from here because really what I'm doing is providing some background information and then the purpose of the meeting tonight, as I understand it, is really a dialogue among the board members. So we have these four buildings and they're all on the agenda tonight because they are either vacant, partially vacant, or soon to be vacant and involve some decisions as to future uses of the building. Before we dive into the first building that we're going to be talking about tonight, just a few words on, you know, some things that I'm sure the board is well aware of, but for the public as well, in terms of what are the, some of the considerations that we have in mind as we think about what to do with these buildings. Obviously, you know, we want to do what's in the best interest broadly of the community, what's the best use of the facility, and are there town meeting votes that need to be honored, other traditions that need to be taken into account as we, specifically the intent of the acquisition of the particular property. Sometimes there are considerations there that we need to be mindful of. Clearly, if we are going to be entertaining any arrangement with a third party, a private entity, be it for-profit or nonprofit, any lease or sale to a private entity requires a competitive procurement process. So we can certainly, the board is free to discuss and hear suggestions from the public as to some possible uses by third parties, but we don't want to get too far down the path of any one particular proposal because we will have to go through a competitive selection process and we don't want to appear to have made a decision prior to going through that required procurement process. The fiscal considerations are certainly front of mind for the town manager and I. considerations are certainly front of mind for the town manager and I, and that relates to a number of things. One is obviously the carrying cost of the building, the maintenance, the utilities, the insurance, on the cost side of the equation, if the town is to continue owning the property. And on the plus side of the equation, if it is leased, is there a rental income? If it is sold, is there a potential tax revenue that will be ongoing as a, if it's sold to a private entity? And finally, staff resources. We seem to spend a disproportionate amount of time on some of these properties. It's just sort of the nature of the beast because, you know, as a municipality, we're, we have good infrastructure for managing fire departments and police departments and public works departments, but we're less adept at farms and golf courses and other leased operations. So, you know, there are obviously situations where the community decides that the best situation is a lease to a private entity, but certainly when we're not in that situation, when we have a municipal use or a sale to a private entity, it doesn't become that staff burden of ongoing administration. So with that, the first building that we are talking about tonight is the Edward Marks Building, which the board toured earlier today. This was originally known as the Poor House. It is a historic building located on the municipal campus with the police station, Fuller Field, Gus Canty Community Center, and the Senior Center, which is now under construction. It is zoned for public use. The original Poor House, the oldest part of the building dates back to 1769, and my understanding is that there is an addition that dates back to circa 1842. It is listed on the State Register of Historic Places, and there is a state preservation restriction on that property. That restriction pertains to the interior of the building as well as the exterior of the building and even the landscaping elements. So when the town has recently done work on the building or around the building, even the work being done on the site relative to the police station parking lot and the shared parking lot, that had to be run by the Massachusetts Historical Commission as well. The size of the building is approximately 6,000 square feet, including all three stories. This is a view from the side facing the Gus Canty. On the left and on the right is the rear of the building facing the police station. This is a view of the interior of the building. It was used by the Falmouth Pension Board as offices, and it was at that time that the glass door was put in and there were some other renovations done to the interior of the building. Most of the walls are sheet rocked. I'm not going to go through all their, as the board saw, there are many, many little rooms on two floors of this building, not even counting the attic and the basement. So just a couple of representative photos of the interior. So as far as future uses of the Edward Marks Building, the first floor is to be used to relocate Human Services from their rented space to the first floor space previously used by the Retirement Board. That decision was affirmed by the Board of Selectment in 2013. We would point out that Human Services has frequent interaction with the Police Department as well as the Senior Center and the Senior Center staff, and some interaction with Joe Olenek and the Recreation Department as well. So there's some nice synergy there. They're all part of the Community Services Umbrella Organization or, you know, Department, if you will. The town meeting approved just back in November, $100,000 to pay for some of the costs associated with the relocation of Human Services. And in prior years, there was also funding approved for the replacement of the roof and the HVAC system. I would mention briefly, the, both of those renovate, those upgrades are planned for the spring.
On the $100,000 approved for the relocation of Human Services, was that specific to this location or was that?
Yes, it was for the Eddie Marks Building. Yes. So that's the, that's the plan for the first floor. As far as the second floor, any regular use of that floor presents some real challenges with respect to ADA access, whether it's a public office or a private use. Putting in an elevator would be extremely expensive and certainly would not enhance the historic appeal of the structure. So we do not have an immediate plan for a regular use. Certainly, there could be an opportunity to do additional preservation work on the second floor and perhaps make it available to the public if there is a, you know, a partnership arrangement, perhaps similar to what the town has with Nobska, to arrange private docents and some private energy and investment in some of that preservation work. And I think that's it for, that's all I had in terms of opening remarks and, you know, welcome any comments and questions from the board.
Might it make sense just to go through the four buildings and you agree, sure, if you would?
Happy to, sure. So the second facility that the town, that the selectmen looked at this evening on their site visit immediately before this meeting was the existing Senior Center.
Sorry, folks who are standing, please come on in and have a seat. Welcome. Come right in, have a seat, and we'll continue. Sorry, Peter, go ahead.
No problem. So this is the current existing Senior Center, and as I think everyone is well aware, the new Senior Center construction is well underway. If all goes exactly according to Hoyle, that construction could be completed as early as January of 2020. So, you know, we have some time to make a decision, but certainly discussion of the future use is timely. The Senior Center sits on a parcel of land that is 1.6 acres. It is zoned residential. I would point out that the immediately adjacent property is zoned commercial. So there could be a potential with town meeting approval to consider rezoning of that parcel. The building was constructed in 1977. It is approximately 4,000 square feet. It is located within the state and town wetland buffer zone and within a flood a zone. So future redevelopment is somewhat limited by that. My understanding is that the building could be renovated or even torn down and completely rebuilt on the existing footprint. But in terms of expanding the footprint, there, I think it would be very difficult to expand the footprint or the parking lot because of the flood plain and wetlands issues. This is just an aerial showing the 30, approximately 35 parking spaces that exist around the Senior Center and the location on Dillingham Ave. And this is the wetlands delineation, the green border toward the outside is the state wetlands delineation, and I believe the town, once updated, would be a very similar delineation. And the, there's a section to the north that has been looked at, that, or, yeah, the, sorry, the lavender shape there is a wooded wetland that has been delineated. So inside the Senior Center, this is the large multipurpose room. These are two of the program rooms. This is the kitchen. And the two restrooms, the men's room is on the right and the women's room on the left. Building is in, is in fair condition. And in terms of potential uses, these happen to be ranked, I think, in order of fiscal appeal with the most fiscally appealing on the top and the least on the bottom, but all viable options. So the board could consider selling without restriction, selling with a preference, and that preference could be for commercial use, the preference could be for affordable housing, or some other use that the board might determine. And that would be determined as part of developing the request for proposals. Another option is to demolish the structure and retain the parcel as satellite parking. As we know, parking is certainly in high demand, particularly in the summertime and with the use of the Fuller Field for the Commodores baseball games as well, combined with the uses at the municipal campus with the Senior Center being added. That certainly has some appeal, particularly for tour buses and that sort of thing. And then finally, a lease to a nonprofit. Given the residential zoning, a lease to a nonprofit may require a special permit.
Possibly municipal use?
A municipal use may also requi, I'd have to double check that. I'm second guessing my memory as to whether, there are some municipal uses that would be allowed. For example, I know a park would not require a special permit. That would be allowed use as.
Certainly, the Senior Center was allowed there. So something similar to that must be allowed if that could be allowed, right?
Right. I, my only hesitation there is sometimes with the date of the use, sometime, if it precedes zoning, and if you change the use, does that trigger a new standard? So I just don't want to give you a definitive answer on that. The next property is the Emerald House property. The Emerald House itself is located on 67 Davisville Road. As the board is aware, this has recently been leased to the Falmouth Service Center, and they operated a thrift shop, excuse me, a thrift shop there. That lease has been terminated, so we are now looking at the future disposition of this property. The Emerald House sits on a 4.9 acre site, which is zoned residential. It was acquired in 1995 for public recreation purposes. The adjacent parcel to the south, known as the Reposa Parcel, is, has an address of 81 Davisville Road. That's an additional 3.94 acres, currently undeveloped. It was acquired in 2007 for public recreation and municipal purposes. Both are under the control, current control of the Board of Selectmen. The Emerald House itself was built in about 1800. It is included on the town's list of significant buildings. It's a small house, 1,000 square feet. The interior is in excellent condition. It was gutted prior to the thrift shop, the lease to the Falmouth Service Center for the thrift shop. As part of that, we, it does not have a full kitchen and it does not have a full bathroom. This is an aerial showing the East Falmouth Elementary School to the north and the two town parcels to the south. The 67 Davisville, again, is the one that has the Emerald House located on it. This is a view to the north, showing the driveway and the parking. And this is the west side, the rear of the building. And a couple photos of the interior kitchen on the right, so the half kitchen, if you will. There's no stove, but there is a sink, and so there is still plumbing. The, that, as you go into the building from the back, the kitchen is toward the rear, and then that building on the left is the next room as you walk toward the front. This shows the room that is immediately in the front on the first floor. As you go up, there's the half bathroom, and there's another little room on that floor. And then the top floor is one open space broken up by the stairwell. So this is still the top floor. Potential uses of this property are, again, limited by zoning. It is zoned residential. The adjacent zoning to the north is a public use for the school, and to the south and across the street, it is zoned residential. There has, there is a proposal going to town meeting in April for an all-people's playground at this parcel of land. That certainly is compatible with some use of the Emerald House lot itself. There has been some discussion of a community garden at this location, as well as potentially an athletic field. I would say the athletic field was one of those purposes that was mentioned when the town acquired the land. It hasn't really been actively talked about recently, other than when we had a brief discussion with the board about the all-purpose playground, and we talked about, can we do all of these things on these properties? And generally, the answer was yes. There's enough room for all of that. So a lease to a nonprofit is certainly an option to, you know, continue what was done with the Falmouth Service Center. A special permit would likely be required for such a lease. Subdividing the 67 Davisville Road parcel could be considered, so that a house lot could be sold. I would imagine that if the board was interested in doing that, we would want to have a historic preservation restriction on the house to honor the intent of the purpose of that property, which was historic preservation, to honor the Portuguese heritage and the farm and the history that that represents. And so that would, that would, again, that could be done in a way that allows for a playground and allows for community gardens, but it would certainly increase the cost because you'd be looking at creating new driveway, new parking to the, to the south, you know, on that, the access would be from 81 Davisville as opposed to the current parking, parking and driving area on the 67 Davisville lot.
Okay, let's pause one more second. Anybody who's got a seat next to them, please raise your hand. Folks in the hall, come on in and have a seat. We've got about four right here. Please feel free, come on in. Four seats, going. Come on in, Mary, take a seat. There are about four of them there. Go right ahead. Sorry, Peter, go.
No problem.
Could I ask you just a question about the acquisition of the 67 Davisville? It was, certainly before I was on the Board of Selectmen, I wasn't sure if there's any more detail as to how that one came into the possession of the town. Certainly, I know about the Poor House and the Senior Center, but I don't really remember the exact details of the acquisition of 67 Davisville, of Emerald House.
So I did read the town meeting transcript. It was a while ago that I read it, but what I can tell you is that the idea at the time was, you know, partly historic preservation, but there was a lot of discussion about the adjacency to the school and an athletic field. I think since that time, the school didn't seem to place a priority on additional athletic fields at that location. So, and I did speak briefly with the superintendent and school fiscal director, Patrick Murphy, and they are not seeing it as a high priority for a school athletic field. That's not to say you might not want to put one there for municipal purposes.
I think actually Dick Kendall was involved in that, and maybe, Dick, do you have any more information about the acquisition of Emerald House as to, yeah, about the Emerald House as to? Because I thought you were involved in yet, in us acquiring Emerald House back when we did.
Richard Kendall, I chaired the Emerald House Committee when it was about to be torn down. And I was watching television tonight, and I said, I'm going to, I'm going to drive down and listen to the discussion. And in your comments earlier, Kenny Brager and I and representatives of the Portuguese American Club, the Conservation Groups, Historic Commission, the house for us was a, an effort. It took us about a year to work it through, but it represented to us the last vestige of recognition of what the strawberry industry was in Falmouth. And Joe Netto was the person who should be talking because he was the vice chair of the committee. And I would turn it over to Joe to come up because you have the background. I think you actually did some picking. But for us, it was, it represented strawberry growing when Cape Cod and Falmouth in particular was the largest growing community of strawberries in the United States. It was, but the, you're a picker, so I was just chairing the committee.
Mr. Netto, Mr. Netto, if you'd give us a couple minutes on the question.
Thank you very much. Yes, briefly to answer your question, we had an article in front of us at town meeting to tear this property down. The town had acquired it, acquired the land, and acquired the building. And we defeated the article, and the Board of Selectmen at the time formed a committee, which Mr. Kendall chaired. And it was the goal of the committee to preserve this building, mainly to reflect on the Portuguese heritage of strawberry farming in East Falmouth. And as I sit here tonight, as you went through the different buildings, I have to say that I know it's an alternative, but for the town to consider selling any of these buildings, I find appalling.
buildings, I find appalling. And this one, the most, I know as bean counters, we always look at what it costs. We're preserving the heritage of the town of Falmouth. And those strawberry farmers of East Falmouth are part of that heritage of Falmouth. And I would like to see that line stricken from the Eddie Marks Building, from the Emerald House Building. I think the Brenda Swain and the Falmouth Service Center, which was a dream, by the way, of Kenny Brager, who kept telling us at all these meetings, this place is going to be so busy. And we just kind of shook our heads and says, Kenny, what are you talking about? Well, Mr. Brager was a hundred and one percent correct. Falmouth Service Center ran a thrift shop there. It was so successful, the building and the site was no longer adequate. And their new site on Sandwich Road, if you've been there, is a lot larger, and it's very successful. Hopefully, we would get to see someone like that, and I hope the town would put out an RFP. But let me also mention the pictures that you saw, and you correct me if I'm mistaken. All of that interior restoration was done at no cost to the town. Yeah, as Mr. Kendall just reaffirmed, no cost whatsoever to the town. It was done by volunteers. I can remember going in there and tearing down the walls on weekends. Arthur Bydel was very, very helpful to us, gave us a great deal of help, and I don't want to get into many names, because when you always mention those that helped, you forget those that didn't. But, you know, that's why the Emerald House is still there today. It was, we turned that vote down at town meeting, I think in the late eighties, and it was as successful endeavor as a thrift center. Also, we went out into the community in the Fisherman's Cove, Davisville Road, and we promised those people that nothing would ever be done there without their knowledge, without contacting them first. And I see now we have an article at town meeting that we're going to look at putting a playground there. Sometimes we've got to look at the promises that we make. Having an article at town meeting already in the warrant, and maybe those people are hearing about it tonight for the first time, and yet we haven't contacted them. Up until the conversation that I had with Peter, there was no contact to any of the civic associations, East Falmouth-Davisville Association, Davisville Road Association, no one had been contacted. These are promises that Mr. Kendall, myself, and the rest of the committee, when selling the concept of this, were made to the neighbors. And sometime in the function of government, that's why some of us, I hate to say that word, maybe old timers, have to keep reminding you that are here, and look at those commitments. Also with this property, and also with the other parcels that the town's acquired south of it, one of our goals that we never did do was community gardens and a relationship of community gardens with the East Falmouth Elementary School. I see today now we have a movement, we lost the community gardens on Gifford Street, we've gained some at Tony Andrews Farm, and hopefully, I know I talked to Karen Schwabey about six months ago on the Tony Andrews, and mentioned this parcel, and that was news to her, that we would do something. And as I leave the mic, I just got to tell you, I have, I wrote down, we don't buy land and, excuse me, we don't sell land and buildings in Falmouth. We buy them, and we preserve them. And I would hope, because this property is directly under your control, that you would keep that in mind. And I would hope that we put out an RFP and get another great tenant like Falmouth Service Center in there, and have this be a community piece of property that we can enjoy the heritage of what that house represents to those of us that have our roots back into the strawberries, which we've got to hurry up and order if we're going to plant them this April. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Netto. Mr. Kendall.
Madam Chair, if I could just make one comment.
Yes, please.
As you well know, it went out to an RFP. Eighty-five percent of the proceeds from that thrift shop amounted, amounted over the years well over a hundred thousand dollars. Eighty-five percent went to the Service Center, fifteen percent to the Cape Cod Clinic, for those who couldn't pay for healthcare. So it produced a dollar for people who needed it most. I appreciate your time and thank the board for its consideration.
Thank you, gentlemen. I want to get through the presentation, and then we can have the discussion.
Since this is related to.
Sure.
I just want to mention something, that Dick Kendall actually put together a history of the Emerald family that actually occupied that house, and it's well worth a read. It was actually published in Spritzel, and so you can go online and actually see it online, but my hat's off to Dick Kendall for preserving the history of that house. So we actually have the people that were living in there, and the kind of lives that they live, the kind of ways that they hustle to make ends meet. So it really is a piece of history that's well documented as well.
Good information. Peter?
So the fourth and final property that we are talking about tonight is the original farmhouse at Tony Andrews Farm, that the address is three ninety-eight Old Meeting House Road. And this is not the house that is currently occupied by Jeff Andrews as part of the lease. So this property is not part of the current farm lease. This lot was carved out as part of the acquisition process and the transition to town ownership. It was mentioned on the floor of town meeting that the disposition of these house lots was to be determined and could potentially be sold. Not that I'm advocating for that, but the option is there if the board chooses to pursue it. That lot is point nine three acres, and as I said, it is currently zoned for municipal purpose, or currently owned under the care and control of the Board of Selectmen for municipal purposes. The zoning is agricultural A. The house was built in nineteen thirty. It has approximately eighteen hundred square feet, three bedrooms, one and a half baths. The house and garage are in fair to poor condition, and that is according to the appraisal that the town obtained as part of the purchase process. The storage sheds are, there are three of them, which we'll see in a moment, and they are in poor condition. So this is, this is the overhead image. The parcel that we're talking about with the original farmhouse is Lot A three to the north on the top of your screen. So you see there, the house is on the far right, and then there's a garage with a shed attached, and then there's another shed next to it, and two more, sorry, three sheds altogether. So one shed adjacent to the garage and two behind it. So this is on the left, the garage, and one shed to the right. The photo below is the interior of that shed to the right. I was speaking with Jeff Andrews a few hours ago, and he was encouraging me to have those sheds demolished, for what that's worth. That's shed number two and shed number three.
He was probably talking about that one.
He was talking about all three. So potential uses, that lot could be sold for residential purposes unrestricted. It could be sold for affordable housing. I would note that it's not necessarily going to be a real cheap, the fit for affordable housing, you know, I guess may not be as easy as it seems. Because of the age and the condition of the house, it would certainly require significant upgrades before it is sold for affordable housing. And then even with that, the question sort of remains of how costly is it going to be to maintain that building for an occupant with a limited income? But it's certainly an option that could be explored. Another option is to lease the parcel to a nonprofit, and a special permit, given the agricultural zoning, may be required for a nonprofit use. And finally, the town could certainly retain the parcel for use in connection with the Andrews Farm, whether that is for the lessie, or, I guess it really would be for the lessie in that scenario. If the town were to continue to own the property, I think we would really want to look closely at demolishing all of the structures, including the house. I know there's a great deal of reluctance on the part of town council and staff in terms of the town owning a residential structure and having a residential lease and being a landlord. Although we have that to some extent with the farm, the fact that it has a direct connection to the farm makes it a little bit, a little bit easier to, for the town to be in that position. So that is it. That concludes.
Thank you.
The opening remarks.
So next, I want to just go to questions from the board, of course, to Peter, and then we'll open it up for some questions from folks in the audience for probably about fifteen minutes, all told. Megan?
Peter, do you recall what the appraisal was on that parcel?
So we don't, we didn't have one because it wasn't a segregated parcel at that time. So we would have to, we would have to update, we would have to get an appraisal for that parcel.
Okay, thank you. Doug?
On the Marks Building, if we wanted to occupy the first floor now, and then leave the second floor to someone else's use at a later time, one problem I see with that is no functional bathroom on the second floor, and no infrastructure to provide a bathroom. So if we're going to have somebody in the first floor now, and then we want to offer the second floor, it's going to cause disruption to anybody occupying that first floor to get the piping up there to serve the second floor bath, so.
Wasn't there piping? Wasn't there piping in the, where that shower was?
There was some pipes on the floor, but it looked to me like everything was removed below. It's an open room below, and the plumbing looked like it was right in the floor previously. From what I could tell, there's no serviceable plumbing, but I didn't look closely, but.
I thought I saw one room that looked like it had plumbing, but nothing substantial, but.
It's the only thing that comes to mind if we would want to make any plans to make that second floor serviceable before it's too late with people in down below.
Yeah, it's a point well taken. You know, I guess the question is, given, given the access challenges and the cost to address those access challenges and the cost to upgrade the second floor generally to a point where it could be used as any sort of active use that's available to the public, you know, I guess the question is, is that, is that something that the town really wants to take on?
I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying that if we wanted to offer it to some group that wanted to take responsibility for those improvements.
Right.
It would need to be able to be accessed to do the work that would probably be needed to create a plumbing, you know.
Yep, yep.
So you might want to keep that in mind and segregate that area behind the stairs, and say, don't get too comfortable in this area, because we may need to come in here and work.
But not only bathroom, it's also an access issue, right? For handicapped accessibility, is there a requirement that it be, the second floor be accessible?
Yes.
So that would be the other issue.
Depending on the use. If a private group was using it for like an office space.
For any, for any public use, would require ADA upgrade.
I was thinking if it would be a private use, maybe private use with office space, I don't know. Just trying to think creatively of what might be useful.
Megan?
Can we just clarify that? So if, so if a, if a private organization used that as a place where they were doing whatever, you know, if they were going to invite individuals to come in and view artifacts or whatever they were going to do, would they have to have an elevator for that?
That's my understanding, you have to make it accessible to the public.
So, yeah, I, again, my, so my understanding is if there's going to be an office there, right? So with an employment relationship, you have an obligation to provide accessibility. So where, you know, I, again, generally, my understanding, so if it's going to be occupied and used on a regular recurring basis, my understanding is that you're going to need to provide access. The exception might be something like doing tours of a historic, of a historic.
That's what I'm, I'm.
Place, so, right, so that, so that, I believe, you know, could the town spend some money to, you know, to preserve the second floor and have occasional visits? I think that, and we'd need to look at this, you know, in great detail with the building commissioner and town council and the, and the access board. I think there is a way to do that. Where it becomes problematic is if some entity, even if it's a private entity, wanted to have an office there where there's an employee on an ongoing basis.
No, understood. I was just thinking of tours that you go on, when you go to Salem or any historic place, where not every part of the building obviously can be even made accessible because of the architecture. So not every part of a particular building can be, you know, accessible by an elevator. So maybe we can just sort of get some, maybe some more specific.
Clarification. Doug?
Because I guess, following up on Doug's point, is I, I'm not really comfortable with the idea of us doing something on the first floor that shuts off any possibility of the second floor of the attic ever being used. And the idea that we're just going to cut it off and say, no, just for the access of using the first floor, and we're not going to worry that we can't ever do anything on the second floor. I don't like us following a solution that cuts off possibilities of other, of other uses. I believe we can accommodate that.
Other questions from the board?
So I know you got permission to do the asphalt roof, but do we want to consider the wood roof, seeing as how it's one of our oldest structures, just to keep it more historic? Just throwing it out there. I've heard some people say that they, they wish we were using wood.
I guess it depends on how much we're going to put into the building, you know, overall. I mean, I guess the, following up on sort of what Doug was saying about, and what you're saying, Doug, I guess I don't understand why we would have a use, and I think Julian's saying it's not precluded, but, you know, I would be uncomfortable with sort of giving up on two-thirds of the building for the usefulness of that bottom floor, which is much needed. I mean, we, we could use that space, there's many ways that it could be utilized, but if that, if the way we utilize it then means that it sort of negates or really delays kind of to a date that we are really unsure about, the other uses or repairs of the rest of the building, to me, I feel like that's a little bit short sighted, because the building is an, is an entire, you know, it's one entity. And I think when you look at the level of repair that is needed, I mean, it's all, it's connected, clearly. I mean, the bones of the building are all connected, and I do think that on that second and third floor of the attic, whatever you want to call it, that, I mean, there's substantial repairs. Whether or not you're going to use that or invite the public, it looks like there are substantial repairs that need to be, I'm not a builder, but need to be done just for the integrity of the building kind of going forward.
And safety.
Could I just clarify, madam? We've had an architect assess that building and confirm that it's structurally sound, and also wanted to confirm that, as was noted at the last town meeting, there'd been a substantial investment in public funds in that building to make certain that its integrity is intact and that it is sound. So I wouldn't want to suggest that the building is not structurally sound, if there are problems there. We have had an architectural assessment done with funds that were approved by town meeting prior to engaging in this whole process. So we're happy to explore utilizing the first floor in a manner that does not compromise possibilities for the future for the second floor. That certainly makes terrific sense, and we would not advocate otherwise.
And I, I think the delineation is, you know, with an architect saying that the building is not going to fall down.
Right, I'm not suggesting that, right.
That's, you know, important. But in terms of our site visit today, certainly there were, you know, Mike Duffin, he got a bit of a nail in his foot, there are open spaces in some respects, some cracked floorboards, so there are, you know, that, that's an integrity issue of another kind. So I'm just kind of bringing those points together. For the members of the public, I know we have a lot of people that are interested in this topic and that want to speak, I'm going to try to even it out by topic. So certainly if someone else has asked the same question or made the same point, you know, maybe step back out of line. I'm going to try to keep it a little bit organized by going property by property. So if there's someone that has a point to make about the Marks Building, can you raise your hand? And we'll keep it to, you know, about a minute or two per person. So does anyone have a question, Barbara, or a comment about the Marks Building?
I just want to draw your attention, when we handed out.
Would you state your name, ma'am?
Oh, excuse me. Barbara Wayan, Falmouth Preservation Alliance. I just wanted to draw your attention to inside of the materials that we handed out in the site visit at the Marks Building slash poorhouse. I'd just like to draw your attention to the fact that we had generated two pages of questions specifically for you to consider. And we feel these are pretty vital, so that, I'm listening to the nuances here. There's a lot of complexity in thinking. There's a lot of complexity in thinking through the building as a whole. So, I would just draw your attention to the, to that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have a question or a comment with respect to the Marx Building, Falmouth Poorhouse? Please step right up.
Malcolm Donald, Precinct Six. I'd like to just correct Peter Johnson Staub's slide. He said it, there's a national, state preservation, I don't know, whatever it is. There is a national, it's on the National Registry of Historic Places, and there's a brass, we have a brass plate, so stating.
The preservation restriction is held by the state of Massachusetts.
Right, but it's on the registry of, National Registry of Historic Places.
Both things are true.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make, clarify that. Yeah, yeah, I'd like to just say that if the town's really interested in, you know, keeping this gem and if a natural shingled roof would really go a long way to, you know, the preservation of this building, and I wish, I hope you seriously consider doing that.
Megan? Just one other thing, and I don't think we can get an answer tonight, and I know we discussed this already with Peter, so I know he's gonna maybe get a little bit more clarity. But one thing I definitely would want to know is just a little bit more information about that, the issue with the partitions to create the rooms that human reso, uh, human services needs. I know that because of the historic nature, they need to be removable. So, I just want to make sure, and, and I'm sure it's possible, but just, I just would love a little bit more information sort of down the road about how that, number one, how will we sort of conform, create the, those spaces? And then, number two, you know, just making sure we're meeting the needs of human services for confidentiality and that soundproof piece, and then obviously the, the electrical piece of it where they have to have their sound machine outside each door. So, just, you know, just a bit of a conundrum to me right now because I just haven't seen it, about how we do that in that space to make sure it's, it's appropriate for, I mean, human services is a little bit different than just a regular office space.
So, for privacy and.
Yes, for privacy and for sound, you know, the sound component of the privacy.
Doug?
I have one more question about the occupying the building. So, would the seven-foot ceilings create any kind of a, an issue or a problem? Is there any kind of a minimum? I mean, when I'm building a project, I've gotta have more than seven feet. Seven feet is only a bare minimum for a small amount of space, but it's not considered to be adequate for a finished ceiling height, generally.
That might be something to look at.
Are you talking about a finished office use?
Yeah.
Well, that was just continuing the, the use that was, has been there historically. So, I know, my understanding is there were permits issued and it was a functional office. So, we certainly, we certainly would clarify that.
Okay.
We have had some involvement with the building commissioner and others, and as well as an architect, as I noted. And that was not noted as a problem.
Okay.
Ms. Shepherd, I see you just came in. I just wonder if you could, for the board and for the audience, just kind of summarize the concerns, things that the, the alliance and other interested parties would want to be sure was noted and, and considered.
Thank you. Susan Shepherd. And I, you know, Joe Netto had said, along with Dick Kendall, we're, we're, we're losing things in this town left and right. And the Poorhouse has an enormous amount of historical stuff still in it. And I would argue, as we did on town meeting floor, that the building should be restored, not renovated. There's a, a great deal more there than just the area within, within the glass enclosure. And I, we're not respecting that at all. And we're not respecting the outside of it either. You know, we, we named this building after Eddie Marx. And it is now going to be very much a focal point because there it is, right next to the Senior Center, right across from a large hotel that's coming in on the other corner. We're talking about, you know, a, a vision for the whole Davisville area. I, I think we need to respect this building. We did, we found one of the original windows in the basement. It had been replaced. This was a second floor window. And we found a lot of the original doors. I, I think that it needs to be brought back to something much more respectful of, of what it was. And I don't think we can just say, "Well, never mind, just let the other floors decay." You know, and, and there's going to be maintenance on the whole building. I think in your packets, there's a financial projection for that. And I, I know that the intent is to get human services out of a building in which they're paying rent, but, you know, I, I, I don't think, I don't think you'll get that money back. You'll be pouring more money into the building. So, if we're gonna pour money into the building, let's do it right. And let's save the historic parts and think of a more creative way to use it. And there are nonprofit groups that go to work on these things. It worked for Highfield. You know, I, I, it can work for this. It can work for the Tony Andrews Farm, Farm House. These are things that we should not be just tossing aside or, or disrespecting. I mean, this is the oldest building in Falmouth. We need to, we need to treat it appropriately. Thank you.
Do I understand? Thank you for that. Very important history. So, with, just so the public has some information about the, the packet that the board just got today, with respect to the restoration plan, the estimate for non-pervailing wage would be about a million six hundred and fifty, and for prevailing wage cost would be two million four hundred and seventy-five thousand. And do you, do you know how this analysis came to be, or?
We went through the building with, with Mike Duffany, who was there tonight and who I'm sure would be happy to answer questions for you. This was, this was some time ago. Mike is probably more familiar with the building than, than any of us. And as you probably know, he's, also feels that we're perhaps getting rid of some buildings that we should not be getting rid of. And I, you know, these things can be done. They have been done other places in town, and in the case of the Poorhouse, they absolutely should be done. The age of the building alone is one of the reasons that it should be done. But it's also part of the history of the town. And there are people who have amazing stories about it. You know, I talked to Andy Dufrain, and he remembers it when it was still a Poorhouse. We need to look at it that way, not just as a place. It's already been bastardized on the ground floor. We, we should not allow any more of that, in, in my opinion. I, I'm not saying that it can't be used, or it can't be used by the town, but the, the historic nature of things should be respected in that process.
Thank you. Any other questions from Ms. Shepherd from the board? Thank you. Does anyone else, we'll take one more question or comment on the Marx Building? Thank you. Next, we'll just, on the old Senior Center building, is there anyone? Ahmed, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Ahmed Mustafa, Precinct Four. On the old Senior Center, it's a dream that a lot of hearts have wished for. Ted Gibbs was the first one to come about, thinking about that building and making it a all-veterans service center. And that's basically what we're looking at. If you could keep that in mind, and I would, by the way, all of you were supposed to have gotten a packet with all of the rules and regulations that refer to veterans and especially Chapter Forty, Section Nine, a lease to a veterans' organization. So, that's basically it. I don't want to take too much of your time, but that's shortened down.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on the Senior Center building? Thank you. Just moving ahead, is there anyone here who has a question or would like to speak on the Emerald House? Please, Mr. Netto. You got a couple more minutes.
Joe Netto, Precinct Nine. I would urge the board of selectmen because this property's under your purview to immediately put out an RFP for this property as soon as possible along the lines of what your last RFP was. Mr. Dick Kendall just told you, the financial success of that property was overwhelming. This is a piece of property that hasn't cost the town anything, and if done correctly, it'll continue. And it also serves the community, and that was one of the goals on the committee. The second part, now I'll step down. If you could put the slide up of the property that, in question?
Pardon me, while you're doing that, and, and the RFP, what are the top one or two things that it should say?
Well, that it should serve the community, and that was our goal that we, you know, that's the effort that we put into this, to preserve the heritage which, that was there. I hope it hasn't disappeared, all the artifacts, the butterfly collection, you know, from Beamer Row, and that's what I sold it for five cents. A kid would get butterflies, take them down there, and she collected them. And it was interesting to see some of those butterflies still there. The service center did an excellent job, you know, in doing that. You know, also, the community there did not want a municipal building that was open Monday to Friday, eight to four every day. They didn't want the traffic. They didn't, they didn't want the, you know, commotion with that. And that was another thing I forgot to mention that I'm coming back up here. But, and, and I also, before going farther, so Chairperson Moran, I want to thank you personally, you and your board, for giving the public this input in many of these decisions, not only on this piece of property, but on other items on the agenda and other selectmen's meeting, whether it be the Route Twenty-Eight corridor, whether it be the Needle Exchange. And I think what we can see from that is once we get into a discussion, we come up with decisions that benefit everyone. And before we go any farther, I, I personally want to go any farther without thanking you for, in all my years as coming to these meetings, there've been quite a few, I've never seen a board this open to the, and we have a tremendous amount of knowledge in this. We don't need outside consultants. We have a tremendous amount of knowledge here. Okay, now, to inform the people of East Falmouth of what's going on, the article that's coming up, Mr. Staub, for the playground, what parcel of land is that gonna be on?
Well, it's, it's a, it's a design article. It's a preliminary design article. So, to be honest, I, I can't, you, you know, that's, the details are, are to be determined. There was, there were a couple of sketches with different ideas shown in the layout, but I think the general idea was to be able to use the Emerald House parking to, as part of the parking support for the playground. That parking may need to be expanded, and it may be that they would want to allow access from the school parking lot as well. So, you know, I, I think the, the more, more attention was focused on perhaps the easier spot to develop being sixty-seven Davis, but could it, could it encroach on the eighty-one Davisville parcel? It, it, it certainly could.
I just want to say, I, I know, I understand, you know, the importance of having the community weigh in on this. But I do want to say, you know, Kathleen Haynes is trying. I mean, she's had, she's been promoting this as much as she can to get more input. She's been reaching out to individuals. So, as Chair of the Commission on Disability, she really is trying to, to get public input. And I know she's kind of tapped various individuals to try and get their input about this. So, you know, I just want to say that she is trying to have that conversation. She certainly isn't trying to shut anyone out, and it is really at that preliminary stage where they're trying to, and she's happy to, I hope people attend their meetings because she's been trying to gain more support so that people can have input in on that. So, she is trying her best to get that public input around that issue of the potential for that in that general area.
And I'm sure after tonight that that's gonna be, well, one of the comments I'd like to make is that that be moved or looked at at eighty-one. Because in doing the RFP, which is ahead of the playground, because that's property that we've already owned and it's been successful, I don't think that we'd want to lose any potential in looking at the long-range picture. I know, and I, I assumed that that was gonna be the answer because of the parking. Also, sixty-seven Davisville, this current school administration or the, you know, for playing fields might not be that involved with this parcel. But then we would be interfering with the extension of the East Falmouth Elementary School in those fields. So, I would hope that this would go more to eighty-one, the playground. And if that came up at town meeting, I'd speak on that. I think we want to protect what we already have, what's already there. And we could, someone could answer your RFP when you put it out that needs more space than just, you know, the building. That's the only, that's the point that I wanted to make. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Netto. Barbara?
Barbara Wayans, again, Falmouth Preservation Alliance. Something that I find very disconcerting about the playground proposal, parking for the moment aside the merits of having a playground that caters to all abilities and disabilities, as I understand it, is we're completely losing the story that Mr. Netto and others have spoken about. This is the last building we have that represents a heritage and, and a whole agrarian way of life. The whole, the whole strawberry story itself is just astonishing to think that Falmouth was literally the strawberry capital of the U.S. for a while. I mean, think, think about that. There's no vestige of that if you turn that into a playground. I, I'm, I'm just not getting it. We're just shipping history off into a corner, whether it's the Poorhouse or whether it's this. What's, the stories behind these buildings are very important to our current character. And if one of my board members were here, because she's in the hospitality industry, she would tell you about the importance of these buildings for heritage tourism, which is a whole factor on our shoulder seasons. That's when we get heritage tourism. So, I would just ask you to pause on where the playground goes. Not, I'm not trying to negate the value of that, but also remember the value of the story around that whole property. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And I think the, the point is well-made that we don't, you know, only have to do one thing. We certainly can consider all kinds of concerns and, and be more, you know, kind of multi-use in terms of respecting various considerations, history. Barbara was talking about Dory Ketterer, who told me at the tour that part of her property is historic. And the folks who originally owned the building that she was in lost everything and had to move the family to the Poorhouse. And, and there she was at the moment telling me the story in the Poorhouse. So, it's those kind of historical, you know, anecdotes that really, you know, come home to, to some folks. Megan?
Just, you know, to go along with that, I think we, again, I don't think it has to be either or, as Sue was saying. And I think you can raise the, you know, awareness around, say, an exhibit or a presentation about the history, about that particular parcel, and about, you know, the family as individuals, but also how they are part of a large. a larger story of our community, while at the same time, I mean, you know, folks who have little kids, we're happy to go to, it's rare, you can do something historical while your children maybe are doing something else. So I think we could, it's a very large, between the two of them, it's a lot of space, and I think there are ways to incorporate, you know, a number of uses that can honor that history, but all still, all, you know, still be a living sort of, you know, place that has energy and vibrancy, the idea of a community garden, which has been talked about already, you know, really just making that a place that, that people actually go to, because otherwise, you know, even for, it was a wonderful use previously, but unless you were going for that particular reason, to visit the, the Service Center thrift shop, there wasn't necessarily a reason to visit that, that property. So I think, you know, we have an opportunity to, to really enhance this property and think about how we draw people to it for all those historical reasons, but also for the, the larger reason of just kind of keeping that space alive for the purpose that was, you know, really laid out when the town purchased it. And I think it is sort of that open space, recreation, community building, how can we build community in this, you know, in this place, so.
And Doug?
I really want to pass my respect and appreciation for the Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, really being concerned about the financial status of the town, but I would hope we would take off the table the idea that we're going to sell any of these properties, that we are in a business where we try to purchase and preserve them for the benefit of the town, and it may financially be a better idea to sell them or dispose them, but I would hope we just don't pursue that, that some things are more important than making sure that we are saving as much money as we can.
And I, I think that's, you know, Mr. Netto gave the board a very kind compliment, because this board certainly does really make tremendous efforts to try to reach out. And the whole point of this particular meeting with multiple interests in these town buildings was to, to kind of educate the board on particular concerns even more, so that we can properly direct the, the Town Manager in, in terms of, within town meetings, vote, and, and certainly financial considerations, to try as, as best as possible to accommodate many of these concerns. So I really want to thank you all for contributing to that and to invite folks to continue to. If you have an afterthought, again, please email us. I want to quickly move from the Emerald House to the Andrews Farmhouse. Please step right up. Quick hands, get the early worm in the farming business.
My kid in the hallway making noise.
Welcome.
My name's Jennifer Christian, I'm representing farming Falmouth today. We are a new nonprofit that actually formed from the effort of saving Tony Andrews Farm. So we have a lot invested in this property, two years going now. My son's two, two months now, and he was at his first farming Falmouth meeting slash working group meeting at three months. So it's a long effort, and we're so happy that the farm is secure, and I'm just here to kind of put on the table why we feel it is most valuable to keep that property with the farm. And so the benefits, as we see it as an agricultural, educational nonprofit, is farming is a community service. And so any of us that have chosen to be farmers, we're not in it for the money, and I just want to put that out, because any benefit you can give to a farmer to help the viability of their business is an amazing thing for a town to do, especially when you have the property and you're leasing it to a farmer, or multiple farmers, which we feel that Tony Andrews Farm could easily support multiple farming operations. This property in particular, because of the conservation restriction on the rest of the land, is one of the only places you can build new permanent structures. Am I right on that? I want to make sure, like, if we wanted to build a commercial kitchen for value-added products, that the farmer could then diversify their operation, that's the property we would need, correct?
Right, a building with the foundation can only be on the, the, either of the two house lots.
So unless we were to raise the farm stand and give it a new floor, or, so that there's no new foundations that can be put on any other property except this one?
I don't want to get too detailed, but there is some space behind Lot A2 where, at Three-Ninety-Four Old Meeting House, there is some space there that you could put another building.
But for, like, yeah, okay. So, having said that, the, the value of that space for the diversification of farming operations and storage are pretty important. And then we look at it as the supporting of the farmer. So you have leases that are trying to make ends meet and trying to do a good thing for the town by creating a local food network and creating local food that's healthy, and then having it be a town on property as a nonprofit gets more involved, and we're trying to do educational programming through that. The diversity of that farming operation only helps us expand our offerings, and so having, say, a commercial kitchen built eventually to do training with all kinds of food and to help the farmer produce things, or to use it as workforce housing, which is, you know, there's jobs in this town, but we can, we can safely say there's not enough housing to afford them, and with the labor, the wage rate of farmworkers living in this town is, it's kind of a bleak thought. Unless you're subsidizing that housing in some way, it's going to be really hard for a farmer to viably offer a living wage in this area. And then the price of land, to, to be able, all, all those things really add into the supporting the farmer that you have on this already very valuable property. And then the amount of education that you could do with that building renovated, I mean, the strawberry farming history in this town alone, like, that farm represents ninety years of that history, and it's still going. So to, to have a place where people, public could go and actually have some of that history given to them, and then workforce housing, the ability to build another facility for storing equipment, equipment upgrading, you know, some of the stuff you don't want out in the open, out in the rain. And so I guess we just want you to explore as many options and as many ways as possible to keep that property linked with the farm, because we see it as an invaluable part of keeping that farm and the farmers on it viable. As, then, we've spoken to Peter, and I feel like Susan is talking to a few of the selectmen about our nonprofits' interest in possibly taking it off your hands and renovating it, putting in workforce housing, maybe an office space for us and a historical component, so that we could then, you know, have our cake and eat it too in a way, because I feel like, as, right, a nonprofit could probably do it a little cheaper than the town due to the bidding process and all those legalities. So I guess having a bid, having an RFP, just keeping it linked to the farm, I feel, is more valuable than we can see now, and the long-sightedness of this property needs to be key, especially being that you, you can't build on any other part of this property. Currently, the nonprofit is working with a group that just got taken out of their community garden space, and we're working with Jeff and the team on getting a lease agreement from Jeff Andrews to put a community garden on Tony Andrews Farm. And part of our, our goal that would feed our mission is to put a community garden in every village in Falmouth, so to shift a little to the Emerald House piece. That is, the community garden, like, having a little space set aside for that would be really valuable also, in our view, going forward with our mission as well.
Good, good presentation. Any questions?
No questions.
Thank you very much, very comprehensive. Anyone else on Andrews Farm? Anything else from the board?
Not to belabor the point, but I do, I do want to join in to say that I think, you know, when we talked about acquiring this parcel, a really big component of it was an educational piece and kind of connecting it back to being not just a, a sort of a private farm, which, you know, it has been, and the public has certainly enjoyed that, but how do we link that into sort of a more, you know, piece that, that really touches more the young people in our community and individuals? So I, I do think space that allows for that interaction of the public and of our students with that facility as it goes forward, whether or not it requires that house to be there, I do want to make sure that we kind of keep that in the forefront, because that was something that we, we heard over and over again, was that educational piece of it.
Doug?
I like the idea of keeping the house tied to the farm. I know we've kept it separate for the reasons for purchasing it, but I, I think it's just another option that we need to keep open in that area. And if we need to tear down the really derelict sheds and then do whatever temporary measures to keep the house, I don't know if it's leaking, but just to keep it from falling into disrepair until we can see if there's a successful RFP from somebody like farming Falmouth or a farm-related group that would want to take some initiative there.
Great. I just kind of want to end this, this item with the, the only property out of the four that there are imminent plans for is the Marx Building, and I just want to give the Town Manager an opportunity to let folks in the room know what the next steps are in terms of the Marx Building.
Well, we've documented that funds have been voted by town meeting on at least three separate occasions, and we've had a passed direction from this board in terms of relocating the Human Services function from its current rental space to a portion of, at least a portion of the first floor, the first floor only of the Marx Building. And funds have been allocated for roof replacement, that contract has been awarded, and that is planned to go forward, because we do have a roof that is failing. Our intention would be to proceed with that, to make certain that we don't compromise that structure and not act as appropriate stewards.
On that, can I, I know there were a couple of questions raised earlier about the materials to be used for the roof. Can you provide information to the board or confirmation from Mass and Mass Historic or the National Historic Regis, whichever governing body confirmed that the materials that are proposed are allowed, because that was raised, Mass Historic?
We're happy to confirm that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, we, we conducted that last year.
Great. And then, so the process would be fix the roof and then move Human Services in, and do you know what the approximate dates would be?
Well, I, I don't, I don't have dates for a move of Human Services. We have funding also, it's voted by town meeting, for an ESCO project that involves the Marx Building, and that was in anticipation, again, of Human Services being relocated there. That has to be mapped out, it, it's, it's not a major undertaking, it is what I would say a modest undertaking, but that would also be, that would need to occur first, and then we would finalize plans for utilization of the portion of the first floor to be occupied by Human Services, and I'll share that with Mass Historic, including all the details of the temporary wall structures and things like that that can be done. I know we've confirmed this, that you can have walls that are put in that are soundproof and that can have the necessary support, but do not have to be permanent, and we would proceed in that same regard. So we would, we've had approvals from Mass Historic each step of the way, we've had two so far, one on the roof, one on the site plan, and we continue to do that. As members of the board are aware, I believe, I've also indicated that I'm pleased to share that information with Historical Commission as well. But we would like to have that underway so that we could move Human Services to that overall complex. We are in a month-to-month lease where we are now, and could find ourselves at any time in a circumstance where Human Services is homeless, and I really would prefer not to be in that circumstance.
Could be ironic.
Megan, and then Doug, and Sam?
Oh, I just had a quick question about, we don't have a floor plan yet, though, or do we?
We, we have several different, the architect developed that a few years ago when the Board of Selectmen gave the green light to, to proceed. We had the architectural assessment done, we had a few alternate floor plans suggested, and we've been in the midst, Peter particularly working with Suzanne Hauptman, our Human Services Director, of determining what would be the most functional floor plan within the context of respecting and maintaining fully the historic elements of that building.
I would just add, if I could, that the, you know, these are concept-level floor plans, so we don't have, you know, detailed drawings and, and detailed breakouts of cost estimates and where the, you know, where the HVAC facilities are going to go. So that would be part of the next step, would be to work with the architect to flesh out those plans.
Thank you. Sam?
Yeah, I just want to mention, the heating and ventilating has to go with those layout of those partitions.
Absolutely.
Correct. It is more flexible today with these mini-split systems that can be put in different areas, but don't.
Point well taken, yep.
Thanks.
So with the presentation including, you know, there could be a potential use of the second floor, is it the case that the architectural plan will include not closing off any option for installing an elevator if that's required for accessibility to the second floor?
We, we could certainly do that, yes.
And the other thing, it would seem to make sense at this point, is there anything that the architect would have to do to make room for other preservation efforts going forward? In other words, I know Ms. Shepherd had talked about, you know, just being concerned that elements of, historic elements of the upper floors at, be preserved, not, not just renovated? So it, I think it would be important to have a further presentation on how that's addressed in, in more specifics, just since this is the building we are making some moves on.
Sure, I, I, you know, I, I think it's, I, I don't know that it would be particularly challenging to undertake the renovations on the first floor that we're looking to do without compromising anything of historical value on the second floor. I think the more challenging issue might be the issues that Doug Brown raised, which is, you know, well, if we are going to do these major renovations on the second floor, are there going to be ceiling penetrations, and, and how might that disrupt activities on the first floor?
Doug?
I know I've already voted four times to do this work at the Edred Marx Building. I'm now not in favor of it. I would really love to see, is there a possibility, and this is, you know, a pipe dream, of could the old Senior Center serve both the Veterans Council and the Human Services, and have the Edred Marx Building actually become, not a museum on the green, because it's not on the green, but a museum at the other end of the green? And that we really try to find a way that that building can become renovated as the poorhouse and not used as Human Services, not used as that, and I know these are all of the most expensive ideas possible, saying, let the Edred Marx Building become renovated, have these other two organizations use the Senior Center building, and we come up with RFPs for the other two.
Mr. Suss, so what would that entail, with, given the town meeting votes, just asking about process?
Well, I guess we'd need to think that through in greater detail. The one comment I'd make to the board is, you saw the first floor. The first floor has been transformed to office space, not involving anybody currently with the town administration. And so I'm not quite sure how you would turn the clock back, remove what's been transformed, and turn it back to something that was the case twenty, twenty to forty years ago. I'm not sure how that would work and what it would cost, and I'm not sure you would want to undertake that as, as contrasted with making, continuing to make some modest utilization of that transformed first-floor space while maintaining the ability for preservation and, and care of the remaining historical elements, because that first floor, the first-floor work that was done, removed, it appears, a number of historical elements, they're no longer there. The ones that are remaining, we would leave untouched, clearly, and respect and work with Mass Historic and our Historical Commission, but to somehow turn the clock back and recapture elements that are, have been permanently removed by, even prior to the Retirement Board's, from what I've reviewed from the files, there were changes made even prior to the Retirement Board being there. I'm not certain what that would entail, that is a, that might be a bit of a conundrum.
But that's an implementation issue. I was asking about process. What would it take process-wise?
Some of the money has been specifically earmarked for the Marx Building. We don't have to spend it, but we can't just take that money and move it to a different building. We'd have to go back to town meeting and say.
That's what I was asking the Town Manager, exactly.
And have that money go. Have that money go someplace else.
Megan? And I think, I mean, I, Julian's point is well-taken that we can't turn the clock back. But, uh, you know, I think if we play out what Doug is talking about, I mean, certainly, y- you know, you could utilize that first floor in a different way. If it's gonna, if it's going to be something like an exhibit that people visit or a place that people visit, yes, we're not, you're not gonna restore it back to what it was before we started making it into a usable space for town purposes. But it certainly, um, could have a different setup that's not a, an, a town office. I mean, it could be a, a place where people come and there are exhibits. I mean, you see that in, certainly in many museums and then you have other parts of buildings that are, um, you know, more in their kind of original form or you're, you're able to show more of those architectural changes and those, um, those historical pieces. So I, I think that, you know, no one would argue that, I don't think even the Preservation Alliance would argue that we're gonna be able to, you know, go backwards and kind of have that pristine, original form. I don't think it's possible. Um, I don't even know that it's necessary. I think you can still really honor and celebrate the history of that building with that first floor being what it is. I mean, part of that is just looking at the whole history of that building and what it has meant to this town throughout its entire three hundred, I'm not, it's too late for me to do all the, the maths, but a long, long, long time. So, and part of it includes what it's been used for more recently. Part of it includes honoring the legacy of Eddie Marx and what he meant to this community and how he really, you know, exemplified, um, some of that, that historical value of the poorhouse and what it was meant to be. Um, so, you know, I, I'm, I, I think we, we have to be, um, aware of the precarious nature of where, what's going on for Human Services and that we don't wanna cause a disruption, not even a hint of disruption, to the services that they provide to this community. And I think it would be, um, you know, irresponsible of the board if we put that department in a position where, you know, because they're on a month-to-month, if there was any potential for them to kind of lose that space in a way that disrupts services to the people that they serve. Um, but I, I do think there are also some other options, um, that we could, you know, potentially look at.
Sam?
I think there is a sort of a compromise. The schedule by which we might actually restore much of that building is way out. It's not in the current budget. We've got some big demands. I won't even go into them 'cause they're controversial. So any monies that would be invested in restoring that back to something closer to what it was historically is way in the future. I see no reason why we can't make the relatively minor modifications to accommodate the Human Services Department. Things don't stay the same. And it may be sometime ten years in the future, we'll have to move them out of there if we wanna do a more significant restoration. But I see, I, I see accommodating the Human Services Department in that facility right now as a relatively minor change and something that you could build on later on if you wanted to go further. But I don't see the, the money in the cards right now to do a restoration or to put, make that building idle while we wait for that restoration.
Well, the, the restoration might be something that CPC funds would be used for, for example. The, another way to look at the Human Services move is that it would be maybe more difficult to move twice, number one. We have, we have four buildings that we're looking at. So certainly, you know, the Emerald House doesn't physically look like it makes sense. The Andrews Farmhouse doesn't look like the right place. Whether or not the old senior center building, as, as Selectman Jones mentioned, is proper, I know, would, would take other considerations. Uh, the, I think the, this is the time now to, to make these, to take a little bit of time and, and let these various considerations ruminate and sort of look at what makes sense, what doesn't. You know, I, I don't think that there's been any notice to quit that's been received from the landlord of the Human Services Building. The, the town manager has been hard at work making a plan that is incredibly complicated in terms of looking at every department and trying to make it, um, run as inexpensively as makes sense, as efficiently as makes sense and the way that it most serves the public. We're just now taking an opportunity before, you know, everything is actually resettled to, to see if the, you know, if there isn't anything that could be tweaked. I mean, one of the things we talked about earlier, I think that makes sense, is if Human Services is going to that building, if we position things so that the second floor can have some work if needed. That's one idea. But, you know, if, if it's, as Mr. Jones brought up, if it makes more sense to have that building simply be preserved historically as much as possible and if it makes sense not to have a, a town office there, then, you know, this would be the time to consider that. Doug?
If, if we're really considering, uh, restoring it correctly and we've already just given out RFP for an asphalt roof, then we're kind of headed in the wrong direction. 'Cause that's like the main feature of an old historic gem is the authentic wood roof.
And that, I mean, nothing is etched in stone at this point. We didn't just replace the roof.
No, but it's, he just said the contracts have been awarded.
Contract has been awarded and Mass Historic has approved proceeding.
So that would, that would be an incongruous element then. I appreciate your point.
Madam Chair, could I just interject one item just for the board's consideration? We're, we're talking about the poorhouse. We're talking about Human Services. It seems to me that logically, the poorhouse was the earliest version of Falmouth Human Services. And all we're talking about is coming full circle and having a modest portion of this very large structure to be reoccupied by Human Services in a manner that it can deliver those same services as it has historically from Falmouth's earliest history. And I, I think there's a certain, um, attractiveness, uh, in terms of that commonality of purpose. And so I would just, um, appeal to the board to consider whether there isn't a place for that somewhere in this entire concept and, uh, recognizing that it can be done in a manner that does not, um, uh, in any way compromise the history of that building or the attractiveness of the, of that building or its functionality for future preservation. It's merely building upon, uh, the, the improvements that have already been made and modestly adjusting them in a way that's not permanent.
Please.
So, um, I, I mean, I think your point is well-taken and I, and I, you know, here's what I would say. I think we have to, you know, if we think we're going to do some significant preservation on the other two floors and if we think it's something that we wanna open up as sort of a, a gem that's open up to the public, we really have to think about how we then structure the space for Human Services. Because to have a place where people are coming, um, you know, with sometimes sensitive issues, there are privacy issues, and then to also have it be a tourist attraction, I think that's where we would have to be, it's not impossible at all. I mean, there's ways for that to work, there's ways for that to flow. But I do think we wanna give some care and some thought about how that looks in terms of access, in terms of the way the rooms flow, in terms of the community space, um, to, to really understand that we, we want, if this is gonna be the home of Human Services, we want it to be an appropriate, comfortable and welcoming home. We don't wanna say this can be, this building can be everything for everyone all the time because it, you know, it may be able to be, but we have to think really hard about how we, um, how we structure that. And I don't thi- it's a six thousand square foot building. It's a big space. But I think we wanna just be aware of what Human Services does and the fact that we, you know, we don't wanna make it a place that people feel uncomfortable coming to because it's, um, you know, it's a tourist attraction. And that, those two things are a little bit different. They could coexist, but we have to be smart about, I think, how we do that. So it might be part of how we think about designing. If we go forward with that design, how can we design that, not just for the piece that Doug raises about the construction logistics, but also just that, that other component.
Good point.
Very good point. I, I think we're gonna move on now and, um, if anyone who came for those, um, items wants to take this quick opportunity and skedaddle, you're welcome. Uh, the next item on the agenda is to authorize permitting application for Menaut Beach stabilization. Mr. Jack, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Here this evening to talk about the Menaut Beach project, which is separate from the Menaut, um, Boren's Pond Bridge project. So we're here to talk about the study that was performed and various options that are available and what the permitting, um, thereof would be. So when we talk about the word "Menaut," uh, according to the Book of Falmouth, uh, that's a Native American Indian word that means island place. So this is a discussion about the Island Place Beach. I will try to be brief because I do realize you had a very full agenda this evening. Later, our last year in October, uh, Mr. John Ramsey, who completed the study for that area, uh, gave the board a presentation on the project. So I know you have some familiarity with it. A couple of these slides are from his presentation. I think that this slide is a good overview. It shows on the right-hand side of the slide is, uh, Menaut Beach East, which is not part of our discussion this evening. We're gonna predominantly be concerned with Menaut Beach West. One of the other slides I'm gonna be showing is the existing inlet and the existing bridge opening versus the old inlet, uh, prior to nineteen eighty-five and the old bridge. This is just a ten-year timeline from two thousand four to two thousand fourteen, which shows some of the erosion that has occurred in very recent memory. As you can see, it is substantial. And there are a couple more drawings that I'm gonna have that, uh, show a, a bit more than that. But the bottom line here, uh, with, without any action whatsoever on behalf of the town, in less than forty years, the road will be gone, the beach will be gone, and we will build a bridge to nowhere. So this is a slide showing the bridge itself, uh, the existing inlet. It will expand to the east, uh, which would be to the right of the slide on this, uh, by about fifty feet so that the overall span of the bridge would be in the ninety-foot area. This is the western portion, uh, west of the current inlet, showing where the old inlet used to be. So that yellow circle, if you look closely, you can see the remnants of a guardrail, white guardrail there. That is the actual wooden bridge that spanned the old inlet. And then here we have where the road used to go in the water, uh, toward the right a little bit. You can see some dark areas right near the beach. That is the remnants of the old revetment that was built for that bridge. The, or, or the road, rather. The road was not built in the water. Road was built on the beach, all right? So this is circa nineteen ninety and I can thank Mr. Morgado. Yeah. And here in the forefront, you can see the old road, all right? So this is looking to the west if you were standing on the road. As you can see, there are people because there is a beach, a fairly substantial beach to the left of that old bridge. And you can see the white guardrails for where the bridge itself was. The area that I've circled here is gonna be referenced to the next picture because this is showing the eastern abutment of the bridge where the foundation would have been. And here's where it is today. It is fully exposed. The beach to the left of it is completely gone. So the high-water mark goes up past where it is now. The top portion there is the actual wooden deck of the bridge and then below it, you can see the concrete abutment. So that's all that's left. I apologize for the grainy photo, uh, but this came from, uh, a document called the Hurricane at Falmouth, uh, which was documented in the nineteen thirty-eight hurricane that hit. So this would have been looking toward the east on the beach area at Menaut. Toward the right, down near the end of the telephone poles, you can see like a dark line where a building is. That was the actual inlet at that time. But as you can see, there was a substantial amount of beach available. Current conditions, this would be looking toward the west in the parking lot on the west side. And down near the end on the left-hand side, you'll see a pole sticking up. That's the electric meter for where the trailer would go. And we used to park a forty-foot trailer there perpendicular to the road. Right now, there is less than sixty feet from the edge of the road to the edge of the parking lot. So we can no longer put a forty-foot trailer there. We have a fifteen-foot replacement trailer. We can't put the fifteen-foot trailer there. We have to put the fifteen-foot trailer parallel to the road. And as you can see, in twenty eighteen, with the piles of sand that we've had to put up on the parking lot in order to try to preserve it from storm damage, future storm damage, we may not be able to put that trailer at that location even this year in order for it to be able to be accessible. On the upper left, the stone that you see is a portion of the revetment for the old road that is now, of course, in the water. The pipe that you see was the old water main. So that is an asbestos cement water main that was placed under the old road. It used to be beneath five feet of sand and then the road on top of it. It surfaced on its own as a result of erosion. Several years ago, we had to pull those pieces of pipe out of the water and dispose of them. Fortunately, about fifteen years ago, I'd anticipated based on the erosion rates, this might occur. That main was active up until that time. And I affected a replacement of the main up onto the existing road to move it out of harm's way. The other picture on the left, this would be looking toward the east in that vicinity. You can see the remnants of the old tarmac as well as the revetment that was to the, um, sound side of the beach. And this is the same area this year where we have removed the old road portion, but you can clearly see the remaining revetment. This is where the road came back onto the other side of the parking area. So when we talk about resiliency and resiliency components, there are really two key terms here. You have mitigation and adaptation. Mitigation are proactive measures that you use to reduce or forestall hazards such as any measures to reduce carbon emissions. Adaptation measures, those that adapt to the effects of the hazard. So when that happens, you usually have two options. You either protect or you retreat. And those are the generally understood and discussed options when we come into climate change, extreme weather events. So if you're gonna protect, it means that you're utilizing a natural or artificial means to protect and preserve a resource, a land form, a structure or an asset. Retreat is when you feel that you have no option but to move the structure or the asset away from the hazard. The last item that I have here that's in yellow is abandon. I had served on the state's first governor's climate change adaptation mitigation committee. As a matter of fact, along with Mr. Ramsey, who served on that committee. Uh, I also served on a subcommittee of that committee for key infrastructure. So I dealt with a lot of this, including airports, natural gas, electric utilities and what have you, and gave that presentation to the state legislature. At no time did we have any discussion about abandon. So this is kind of a newer term and it's relatively unique. Normally, there is almost always some form of retreat mechanism. But as you're gonna see as I go through the presen- presentation, the Menaut Beach area is rather unique and actually falls into the potential abandonment category. So coastal dunes, everybody talks about them. Few people understand them. They were really a barrier beach. Um, it's a natural preservation method for an inland area. And preservation of that coastal dune or barrier beach enhances coastal resiliency overall. So it's generally understood. Groins, and I'll be talking a little bit about groins as far as structures go, assist or stabilize those preservation efforts. They are not revetments or seawalls. Revetments and seawalls are similar, but a little bit different. A seawall is usually a poured concrete vertical structure that is intended to completely stop and deny nature the opportunity for erosion. Revetment, on the other hand, usually starts at the foot of an embankment that is eroding and then large stones are placed on top of each other, moving up the embankment to have a similar effect of a seawall. So both of them are intended to fully stop and thwart erosion from occurring. A groin does not. A groin is intended to slow the longshore transport of sand. So I'll talk about that a little bit. So preservation efforts would preserve the beach as a local natural resource, preserve the natural habitat, piping clovers specifically. The Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program, um, covers that entire beach area, east and west, as well as a portion of the pond itself. So the whole area is designated under that program. Uh, preservation efforts will extend the life cycle of Menaut Road itself. We're gonna be building a bridge. And that's really why I'm here tonight. The question is, do we build a bridge that isn't gonna have a road? And/or what will we do about that? So when we went into the bridge project, um, that was the first question that I had. What's the life cycle of the road gonna be, given the erosion rates that are visible to everyone who lives here? So that's, the purpose of that study was to make that determination. Termination is it will not match the life cycle of the road if we do not do something about it. So the bridge life is gonna be fifty-plus years. Preserves the water main. They got replaced, all right? Because that's now under the other road that we're presently talking about. And also. road that we're presently talking about, and also preserves and protects the bridge investment, which is going to be $6.1 million. Some considerations. Some of the issues that we're talking about here, you have erosion, which is, of course, a natural force. Sea level rise, which the question is, is it man-made or is it going to be a natural effect? It's not worth having a discussion about it. Either way, there are going to be impacts, but both of those are long-term events. My primary concern at this point is the extreme weather event. Extreme weather event can happen at any time, and not only can, it will take out that road. So the bridge project itself, although it's separate from the beach and road project, the bridge project is a threefold project for the town in that geographic area. It's an ecological project because it'll improve the pond flushing and increase the tidal exchange, which improves the overall water quality, reduces wastewater improvements that may have been necessary in that area. From a TMDL or Total Maximum Daily Load and MEP, Massachusetts Estuaries Program perspective, there are a number of areas that we have to be able to reduce the nutrient loading. Could be conventional sewerin, onsite systems, whatever the case may be. The benefit here from wastewater improvement, we've already done the analysis, widening the inlet of and by itself has the equivalent of searing two-hundred-and-thirty homes in that area. It's a significant benefit for the area. And of course, it reduces or replaces the aging bridge, which is already thirty-four years old, and this is a photo of one end of the abutment of the bridge where it's already showing some of the effects of its age. The beach and road project would be separate for discussion purposes, but we would likely combine it with the bridge project in order to get an economy of scale, because these projects that we're talking about are both marine and coastal in nature, so the same contractor would be able to do them both. So the beach and road project would extend the beach and road life cycles, increase the return on the bridge investment, and protect pond shore properties. Some other considerations, the Coastal Resilience Action Committee recommendation was for nourishment only. The endpoint that is understood is that there will be a loss of the beach over time, eventually a loss of the road, and then the question becomes what to do. So the expectation for the most part is this is going to occur over a fairly slow period of time, thirty-eight years, as a result of erosion. As I mentioned, the problem is an extreme weather event. That is going to happen during that period of time. What will we do if we determine that the endpoint is going to be the loss of the road, and if we determine that means we're going to dead-end the road, then why would we build a bridge? And why would we rebuild the road if anything happened to it? If we did dead-end the road as a result of a loss of the road, that would mean there would be a breach, a substantial breach in that barrier dune. We can't just leave it that way. We have to do something for the breach. Then we would be building another road or another bridge somewhere else, and that would have to be, quote, "the retreat strategy," but where to retreat to? That would have to be a bridge across the entire pond. We would have to acquire property, and then that means almost being sacrificial to the properties that would be south of wherever that location might be. So the recommendation that I'm presenting to you this evening is the same recommendation that came out of the study, which is nourishment program as well as the addition of two groins. So Minot is unique. We're not preserving a private beach. It's a community beach. Not preserving a private drive. It's a coastal scenic road that also serves as an emergency access road. It's not about a private property value, it's about the community or environmental values. It's not just about the road, the beach, the water main, or even the bridge. It's about improving the pond water quality and the ecosystem. So the project is really about preservation and stabilizing the longshore transport of sand. That term will become important in a minute. So we look at sustainability. What's it mean? Mankind's nature is to resist nature. So in a perfect world, we wouldn't build in a hazard area, wouldn't live in a hazard area, wouldn't live in inhospitable areas, we wouldn't alter nature's landforms, we wouldn't deplete our natural resources, we wouldn't fight nature, and that means we probably wouldn't be here.
I have to say what everyone's thinking. You really missed your calling.
You'll really like this one, then. So then we have the reality. So what's the reality? We rebuild an earthquake zone such as California. Uh-oh. We rebuild in flood zones such as New Orleans. We rebuild in hurricane zones, Miami and Florida. We rebuild in tornado alley. We build cities in deserts, Las Vegas. We build dams to control floods such as Hoover Dam, Three Gorges Dam. Three Gorges Dam is the largest dam in the world, and that was built during this century. And there are seventy-seven thousand five hundred other dams in the continental U.S. We build in and around volcanoes such as Hawaii, and currently they're active. And we protect from sea level rise. So for Boston, what is Boston's plan? Boston is not retreating. They are not abandoning. They will protect it, and their proposal is a seawall. So what all of this really means, though, from a humankind perspective? Sustainability. Finding the correct balance between us and the world we live in. Us, the environment, us, and the ecosystem. And that's what this is about. So there are discussions to go back and forth between hard armoring and soft solutions. Both of those methods have identical goals, however. They slow nature's clock, try to maintain a status quo, and are intended to resist nature. Neither method is natural, however. Natural means leave it alone. If erosion is taking the beach, leave it alone. But when we talk about any beach nourishment project, it is really artificial insemination of sand onto a beach. Erosion took it away? That's not good. We're going to replace that sand. But a lot of people presume that's natural. It is not natural. It's utilizing a natural material, sand. But the process is not the natural process. Natural process is do nothing and let it fall into the sea. Simple truth, we love what we have, and we want to keep it as long as we can. Falmouth has sixty-plus miles of shoreline. That number can go anywhere from six to one-hundred miles of shoreline, depending on how you want to characterize it. But by any standard, we have the most shoreline of any community in the Commonwealth, and it means a lot. It means we have a lot of valuable real estate. It means we have a lot of beautiful, natural views and vistas, but it also means we have a lot of responsibility, and it's going to cost a lot of money, to protect and preserve it and to go into the future. For what it's worth, that picture is of the Borns Pond inlet, and I took that picture. So I thought it was rather nice. This was one of Rister Ramsey's slides that you had seen. So this is showing what the conditions were in 2017, illustrating what the proposal is. The yellow line depicted on there is the shoreline for 2017. The red rectangle that you see on the left is the old bridge, and the red lines that you see going out into the water is the old revetment, and then the blue lines there are for the new proposed groins. From a linear distance perspective, the state allows structured trading, and that's what this proposal is. It is trading the revetment, which means we remove the old revetment from the road and replace it with an equivalent linear footage of groins, which are put in perpendicular. So we're not adding to the structure. We're maintaining a status quo, if you will. So by comparison, proposal with groins would extend the nourishment life that we're going to be putting on the beach by about twenty-five percent, and the cost of the actual groin construction would be anywhere between $360,000 and $480,000. $360,000 probably if we put it in with the bridge project, $460,000 if it was standalone. Without the groins, we would be nourishing in eight years versus ten or more years. So the cost over time, $164,000 for each of those eight-year cycles, that represents twenty percent of the original cost of the material that we would have to be adding in order to compensate for those other two years. So there are eight, there are six eight-year cycles in a fifty-year span for the bridge, so the total net cost over time, over that fifty-year period, would be about $984,000. With the groins, the longshore transport of sand is sixteen-hundred cubic yards a year, it'd be twenty-five-hundred cubic yards without the groins. That's very important, and I'll be talking about that shortly. Reduces the sediment to the inlet. Without the groins, it'll increase the sediment load to the inlet. That, too, is very important. And then lastly, reduces the inlet dredging cost. Every two to three years is about where we would be. Without the groins, we would probably be dredging every year. Falmouth Heights Beach, I think it's a beautiful picture. 1959, we dropped one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand cubic yards of sand there for a preservation technique. We've had to do very little with it since. What you're looking at are seven groins from top to bottom on that picture. The purpose of the groins is to slow that longshore transport. It doesn't stop it, it slows the process. So if I was to be asked, why is it that the Falmouth Heights Beach is viable? This is one of the reasons why it is viable. So speaking of Falmouth Heights Beach, this is Falmouth Heights Beach. This is from that little booklet for the 1938 hurricane, which was a category-three hurricane. So this is Grand Ave, standing up near where the ball field is, and the casino, the old Gables Casino, would have been on your right. It's shown, it's not shown in the picture, but it's just to the right. The building in front of you that you're seeing is the British Beer Company. It wasn't that back then, but that is the building. So the waves that you see, and there are two of them there, that are beginning to crest and hit the seawall. So this is giving an example of what an impact looks like that we don't generally see from a Cat III hurricane. When that wave crested, it was three stories tall. We have another Cat III hurricane, we are going to have substantial damage and impacts that we're going to have to make decisions about. So I just found this historical, and given that the British Beer Company is still right there, I think that's kind of neat for that building. I don't know how it survived, quite frankly. Then if we go a little bit to the east, we have the Great Pond Bridge, which was damaged in Hurricane Bob in 1991. But this is the eastern approach to that bridge, and as you can see, we did not sacrifice the road. The road is maintained with a seawall, a revetment type of seawall, and two groin structures. So we're here to talk about permitting. Ply Coastal had completed the study last year, and that was Mr. Ramsey, to evaluate the road life for the bridge project. Funding for that study was $124,000 and change, and we obtained that funding through a state grant with Coastal Zone Management. Conclusion and recommendation there, we have no action alternative, that the maximum road life is less than thirty-nine years if left to its own, but that the bridge life is expected to be fifty-plus years. If we do nourishment only, the road life will be fifty years, but the longshore transport will be twenty-five-hundred cubic yards per year. Nourishment and groin, we still get fifty years on the road. Longshore transport's only sixteen-hundred yards per year. Existing transport is thirteen-hundred yards a year. These three values are very, very significant. So the purpose of a project going into this from an ecological perspective, we're looking at trying to have no net adverse effect. So present transport rate, thirteen-hundred. Put in two groins, but take out the revetment, no actual net effect there, and we allow a longshore transport of sixteen-hundred cubic yards, three-hundred cubic yards more than present. So we've actually improved the downdrift side of the longshore transport. However, putting in twenty-five-hundred cubic yards, we're doubling the existing longshore transport. A lot of that material will wind up going into the inlet, and it defeats the purpose of widening the inlet if we're going to be clogging it up with sediments. So therefore, we're going to have an initial effect. It's going to be a water quality effect. Then we have the dredging components, which is going to be south of the bridge or the vineyard side of the bridge, and then dredging that would have to occur north of the bridge. Different techniques and much more costly to do on the northern side of the bridge. So the conclusion, groins plus nourishment, it's most cost-effective than nourishment alone, extends its life cycle with the nourishment that we're going to be putting down, putting down thirty-two-thousand-seven-hundred cubic yards of sand over about a six-hundred-and-eighty-foot stretch of beach, and that goes from the western inlet portion of the bridge all the way out to the Haydad property. And that could be a separate discussion, because we acquired that property for public use, and as part of the overall project, we're going to be looking at making that property more publicly available. So it's a comprehensive project overall. I do want to move forward, but if it's the board's determination to take a no-action alternative, then I would not recommend building the bridge. So really, that's where I, this evening, I concur with the conclusions of the report, such that the best, most cost-effective, as well as environmentally protective solution is to do beach nourishment and add two additional groins.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. I want to highlight for the public that, you know, looking comprehensively as we look at water quality issues and how the flushing effect would be an improvement and it would need a bridge, we've also looked at this in the 360 view, thanks to Mr. Jack and his team, and certainly appreciate that. Want to recognize in the audience, we have the town planner, we have members of the beach committee with Mr. Magado, who is the manager of the beaches. Thank you for coming. Thank you all for staying the lateness of the hour. I am going to try to move the meeting a little quicker. I think Charlie McCaffrey I saw, he is there, thank you, Chair of Coastal Resiliency. I want to, and other members from Coastal Resiliency, thank you. I want to recognize that Mr. McCaffrey did send a memorandum noting the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee's review with the recommendation out of three choices. One is do nothing, one, number two, is nourish the beach in front of the vulnerable portion of the road, and number three is nourish the beach and add two groins to extend the life of the nourishment, which we've just had a recommendation for. And I also want to, I see Dr. Ramsey there as well. So we have the number-three recommendation, which Mr. Jack has just outlined, his positive recommendation and the economics that go with that. And at this point, just want to see if there's a quick statement beyond what I've said that either Dr. Ramsey or Mr. Magado, someone from the beach committee, or Mr. McCaffrey wants to make. Any of you want to, Charlie, come on up and if you want to contribute, appreciate that.
Thank you. Charlie McCaffrey, Chair of the Coastal Resiliency Committee. The committee reviewed the report and is well aware of all of the issues that Commissioner Jack has mentioned. We looked at it carefully, and we did conclude that while the project is necessary, that the town should avoid the construction of groins. And we made that position in October, and we haven't changed on that opinion at this point. I think many of the benefits can be achieved without the groins.
Thank you very much. Anyone from the, come right up?
I'm Jeff Thomas. I'm the chairman of the Waterways Commission, Committee, and basically, our concern is anything, our interest is anything that reduces the lateral movement of the sand from the waterways perspective means we're going to spend less money dredging and less frequency dredging. So we have not had the opportunity as a committee to discuss and vote on this, however, conceptually, we would agree with Mr. Jack on his recommendations regarding the groins to reduce the lateral movement of that sand. Otherwise, you're just putting more sand in, and then we're spending money and dredging it out after it moves down. Both Borns Pond and it's actually going into Eel Pond as well, or Eel River. So just wanted to mention that.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Netto. And then Mr. Ramsey. Mr. Netto and then Mr. Ramsey. Feel free to line up, it's quicker.
John Ramsey, I just wanted to say something quickly. I think I agree with everything Ray said. What I'd like to point out is, you know, generally groins are, you know, I permit in this state, it's a very difficult thing to do is to permit groins. They are something that's frowned upon, and they are, you know, we've permitted them in very selective situations. Typically, and I think it's very important for everybody to understand, you know, from a regulatory standpoint, we, when we build groins, we're not allowed to have a downdrift impact. Ray had pointed out about the transport rates. This would be something that's monitored and looked at, so we would have to make sure that we are not having an additional adverse impact to downdrift beaches. So I just want to point that out to everyone, so it's understood that, you know, if we get this through- if we get this through permitting, which is never a easy thing to do anyways, we would have to demonstrate that we are not, not having a more adverse impact. And as a matter of fact, they would probably force us to make sure we're improving things.
Important point, thank you. Mr. Netto. And then Mr. Magado. Joe, you can just line up.
Yeah, just line up, Joe, like I did. I'll show you. I'll show you. Just line up behind me. Bruce Magado, Beach Superintendent.
Thank you.
I'm more concerned of an immediacy. I have to open that beach in five months. That beach used to be a seven-guard beach, it's down to four, because there isn't enough sand for it. It's a twenty-four thousand dollar revenue producer for the town. It's going to be substantially less, because we can't put any people on the west side, because there's no beach for them to be on. So I'm looking for an immediate timeline of what we can do to get some nourishment on the beach and/or get it ready to open. That's what I'm looking for some help for on an immediate line. Love Ray's plan and Mr. Ramsey's plan, I think it's long-term, it's got some potential. I, I don't have time for potential, okay? I've got to open up the beach at the end of June. So I'm looking for some help there.
Thank you very much. Mr. Netto.
Joe Netto, precinct nine, and I'm sorry, but there are many points here that we'd have to disagree with. Oh, thank you. I wish Dr. Jude Wilber was here to speak. He's spoken about this numerous times at town meeting. He has a lot more expertise than I do. My expertise will only come from someone who observes, who spent over sixty-one years going to that beach. And he was traveled by boat from here to Florida numerous times. You don't see groynes once you head south. You see thousands of miles of straight beach in New Jersey, in Florida. And you want to know why? Because they realize that groynes don't work. That's the bottom line. If groynes worked, we would have a beach at Minot right now. Building more groynes is not the answer. Beach nourishment, yes. Because you take the sand that's from the ocean, that's in the ocean, that was on the beach, that Mother Nature put back in the ocean, and you do what Florida does, and you put that sand back there, and you re-nourish the beach. A jetty is a groin that protects an entrance to a harbor. If I travel in Falmouth, if groynes worked, or jetties worked, I dispute the fact of no dredging, then why do we dredge green pond every year? Because the jetties build up the sand on one side, the wind blows it into the harbor. That's a fact. I see people here from the Waterways Committee. The sand from a beach that was put there from Woods Hole was a complete waste of money, complete waste of money. It never, it was never put to re-nourish the beach. It ended up blocking the inlet to Eel Pond. You have a sandbar two hundred feet out in the ocean that came from that sand. You go by boat close to shore. I stood on that sandbar last year in a moon tide and took pictures looking in to Bourne's Pond. If groynes worked, why does the Corps of Engineers in such a mess at the east end? Look at the east end of the Cape Cod Canal. We're on the northern side, you have a tremendous amount of sand on the south side, it's starved. We would be doing the wrong thing. I am not going to town meeting and vote for any funds to extend groynes. Again, they don't work. They're proven that they don't work. Some of the, I'm not going to argue these figures. And by the way, Mr. Jack, if we were going to build a bridge if a hurricane next fall wiped out that road completely, we wouldn't have to buy any land. I'm sorry, but there's some scare tactics here. We would build a bridge that would start at approximately Moon Penny and Minot Road and go to the other side of Central Avenue. We wouldn't have to acquire any more, that's where you'd put the bridge. Let's be honest here, folks. Let's do facts that we can back up. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's not negative to the presentation. It's because the presentation has holes in it. Re-nourish the beach now, that is needed. It's the least expensive. And the last thing about the bridge. If I'm not mistaken, that bridge was three parts of the two-and-a-half, Proposition Two-and-a-half override to build the sewer. Build the sewer, refurbish the plant, and part three was to build the bridge. The problem is, there's nothing been going on, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Chairperson Moran. You correct me, don't the neighbors have a court suit against the town to widening the bridge? Isn't that why that project has not gone forward, yes or no?
I'd have to defer to the town manager.
There were legal questions raised, I don't think there was ever a suit filed, to be honest with my knowledge.
I thought that, Ray, is that?
It was resolved.
Okay, it was resolved. So we know, then that's, then that's where we're going forward then with that. Okay, fine. But I think we have to deal with the fact, I'm sorry to be so negative on this, because after such a great presentation, but I don't think all the facts that you got were a hundred percent true. I really don't. Everybody else would be doing this, why are we the only ones? Why are the Corps of Engineers in such a mess with the east end of the canal right now with sandwich and saggamaw? Let's not jump to this, that road isn't going anywhere, isn't sand will protect it. And the last thing, you're going against your committee's recommendation. This is a stop-gap measure. Anytime we're going to be spending money on mitigation of this coastal southern part of Falmouth, it should be from Norbska to Walk White Bay. We have to look at the whole coast on this side of Cape of Falmouth. And by the way, in closing, I was at a friend of mine's house this afternoon who owns a beach that has groynes. He says, "I can't believe they think, they think that groynes are going to stop it. Come and tell them to come visit my beach, and I'll show them what groynes do." I asked him to come to this meeting tonight, he says, "What, and waste my time?" So I have to deliver that message. Come, and I'll show you what groynes do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please. Last, last speaker, two more. Mr. Miskowski.
Paul Miskowski. I think we have to pick our poison. You know, we're going to, are we going to kick this thing down the road and keep, you know, deal with the health issues, deal with all these other things, or say, okay, you know, we're going to lose our road? We have, what, sixty, seventy feet? We have one bad storm, road's gone. We don't do something, we're going to have an issue. It's going to be really expensive. And a lot of us won't be alive at that point by the time we finally think about getting a road, because it's going to take so long to go through all the processing and whatnot. So I think we've got to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, last speaker.
Hi, Arlene Schubert. I hadn't even planned on even hearing or listening to that, but there, the east of there, there's Washburn Island, and that has six groynes that have been put in in the, the late eighteen hundreds. And if you just looked how that island has evolved, that road used to go across where they were talking about, and then it went on to the island. And then those six groynes that are east of the area they're talking about, if you look at the island from the late eighteen hundreds till now, that dog leg that goes across from a road, our yacht club, it just basically hinges up, it just hinges up to the north. And so, if, if they're going to fix that area, what are they going to do? And how is that going to help the Minot area that, across from Minot? Because it's getting really tight in there, and it's not flushing out as well. So I just, that, just as a concerned person that lives in that area.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Questions from members of the board? I'm sorry, sir, we'll take your comment by email. We've really got to move to interviews and, and also petition articles. Very last, and run up to the microphone, please.
He's really moving. Dan Frohle, Seco Shores Association, representing a thousand homes and many boat owners. Whoever talked about the big picture, the town should get the big picture on this, because it's not just Minot. I love Minot, we grew up in it. But that sand is, is creating a problem inside of Eel River West. We have a big headache to deal with here, too. And they'll be back in front of you guys, too. So I would think about a comprehensive solution, not just a point solution.
Thank you. Doug?
I don't know, I was just reflecting on Mr. Netto's comments that, you know, when he went out and saw that big sandbar as the result of our previous nourishment, to me, that illustrates that we need to do something better. Because we just did several years ago, a big, huge nourishment, and like you said, it all is out there making a sandbar. So I'm receptive to the idea of considering these groynes in this particular situation, because it's not different than the Heights type of situation with the convex curve of the shoreline there. And as I spoke to Mr. Ramsey when he gave us the report, that was the explanation, and it's not that unlike the Heights situation. So that's my feeling so far.
Anyone else? Megan?
I just, you know, I, I think, you know, it's going to be, I understand we need to look at the whole picture, but we are going to have some different remedies for different, the shoreline doesn't look the same everywhere. You know, the usage isn't the same everywhere. Some, some pieces of property can be allowed to sort of ebb and flow with the natural, you know, patterns of erosion. Others, we do need to protect because of reasons like infrastructure or, you know, safety in terms of areas for evacuation. So, you know, I, I think the report, when we heard from Dr. Ramsey and we got that full report, it wasn't as if it was this ringing endorsement of groynes. It was noting that those are not generally something that, you know, is favored for all the reasons that we've heard about that, you know, Mr. Netto raised. But I do think this is a slightly particular area that we are seeing some, you know, I mean, just in, you can see it each year. I mean, that area is literally visibly changing each year. So, you know, I, I think if we're going to look at things that we may not want to use in other places, this may be somewhere to consider that. The other piece is, I do hope we have an answer for Mr. Magado, not tonight, because it's not necessarily on here, but just timeliness. We've heard it from other people, I know we've gotten letters from individuals asking about, there were a lot of concerns about Minot Beach last year, and there, people are concerned as we're getting ready to open up again, again this year. So I hope on a coming agenda, we can maybe have some idea of what's going to happen short-term.
I, this might, we can at least see what, what the status is, Mr. Miskowski raised as well. Ray, in terms of timing and Mr. Magado's concern about the beach and staffing it, how does this, the timing of this project reflect that or interfere with it?
The bridge project itself wanted to curse, and we would wait until we have the whole thing permitted before we would start that. Is a projected two-year project for taking out the bridge and putting another bridge in. And I know, it doesn't seem like a big project to take that long a time. I am hoping to try to get it done earlier than that. However, from a Natural Heritage and Dangerous Species programs, there are very specific times of year, based on shellfish, based on eelgrass, based on piping plovers, and environmental conditions that we have to comply with. And they're really very tight. So that's one of the bigger drivers. So I don't expect the project to commence prior to twenty-twenty, and that would be late, more likely late, but theoretically, might happen a little bit earlier in the spring of twenty-twenty. That would probably be the earliest.
Does something need to happen to improve the beaches this season? And when can it be done by?
Oh, for this season? Okay. Five months.
Better say three.
We had put, we had placed some material, but that was on the parking lot predominantly. But the beach itself is, is, as far as beach nourishment goes, that's something I would defer to Bruce on that.
So you'll work together in making that the best situation reasonable?
Yes, and when we have storm events, we do try to respond fairly quickly with the storm events as well, within the limits of what we're able to do.
Thank you, Mr. Magado.
Madam Chairman, we also work in concert with CONCOM. We don't go to the beach and breathe unless CONCOM says it's okay. And so particularly when we're talking about nourishment, I have six thousand cubic yards of sand, thankfully, stored at the DPW from other projects around the town. We would just need permission from the local board and from the state to allow us to nourish that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Doug?
I have a question. Is there any possibility that when we have these type of situations, and all of a sudden we're in a hurry to fix a beach, can we just call up Lawrence and Lynch and use some of that washed sand?
You mean the sand that they have at, physically, at their place?
Yeah, the nice clean-screened sand that they have sitting there.
Sure, those are always, those are always options, they just cost money.
Yeah.
So, but we do, Bruce is right, we have a fair amount of sand that's actually stored that is usable for a number of different areas that we utilize.
What would it take? Is it possible that we might be able to put some sand on that stretch of beach for him?
It's really a permitting issue. It's whether or not we're, and there's east and west, okay? As far as those beaches go.
Yeah.
The dredged sand that we would take out of the inlet usually goes to the east, not the west.
Thank you.
So, they have separate permitting.
So before we have a motion, I just want to give Jen an opportunity to speak. Jen?
Hi, Jen McKay, Conservation Administrator. Right now, Minot West is not allowed to receive nourishment from an old order from the Conservation Commission because of the project that was done with the dredge spoils down in Woods Hole, one that was brought over. So the town would have to request an amendment to that order in order to allow the dredge spoils to be placed on Minot West. So that would be the process, so that would, the town would have to request an amendment, it would have to go through a hearing process, and the board would have to evaluate it, just so everybody's on the same page.
Thank you. Okay.
Could we learn, what, what was the reasoning? If I could? I mean, what?
Reasoning why we didn't, because of the effects to Bourne's Pond inlet.
Right.
They stopped at that time until the town took a more holistic approach in view of Minot Beach.
Because the nourishment alone was causing too much trouble in the inlet?
At that point, yes.
Right.
Peter, did you have a comment you wanted to? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's helpful, thank you.
Everyone, complicated issue, really tough when we have a, a committee who, we've appointed an action committee to look at exactly these types of situations, and we have a disagreement with respect to an expert who's done the study, and then a final overview from the Director of Public Works, who has reviewed all of the information, been on state committees, given testimony, and obviously has a great deal of expertise on this subject. So tough, tough position for the board. Is there anyone who's ready to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve Mr. Jack's request for application for permitting as, as designed.
Second?
I'm sorry, but I just feel like it's the right thing to do. As we said, we saw what happened with the last nourishment project without any additional measures, and it caused a big problem.
I also agree with that, given the difficulty we have getting the dredge to get here for our inlet dredging. If we're going to have to have it every year, I don't think we're going to get the dredge here often enough to be able to do it. And if this is going to slow that down, I don't think groynes work, I think they slow down the process. They don't stop it.
I agree.
And that's the, I think the people looking for them to stop it. It's, you can't stop it, but you might be able to slow it down a little bit.
Sam?
I think it's important to recognize that there's not a perfect solution. So the question is, which one we want to bet on? And I think at this point, I feel comfortable saying, let's go with the one that's recommended. It's recommended by our consultant, that has a lot of experience, has seen a lot of different areas. It's fine for us to cherry-pick things that we've seen, but beach contours are not the same, currents are not the same. And if Mr. Ramsey's given us his best experience and shot, and it maps with what our DPW director feels, I think we should be going that way.
And I guess I would also echo Mr. Brown's suggestion that maybe we should go ahead and get that, apply for that amendment to be able to nourish Minot West at the same time. Not that probably motion, but let's move forward on that if the dredge isn't available and the beach needs it.
Right.
Let's ask for it.
And Mr. Magado's nodding, I'm sure the staff will move ahead with that. Any other comments before the vote is taken? So the, the motion is to go with the process that would include the groynes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much, thank you for the presentation. Thanks for everyone who came, specifically all the committee members. Very appreciative of your time. The next, um, the next item on the agenda is to interview, vote, and appoint committee members. First, we have for Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Patamos, please come up. Pardon?
You were the no vote.
Yes, I was the no.
Jerry Patamos, I think the board's...
Jerry Patamos, uh, I think the board's well aware of me.
Welcome. Yes.
Precinct Two, and you've, have my application, so I think all I'd wanna say is, uh, I really found it interesting to be on the board. I find it, uh, frustrating at times because the regulations are fragmented. And if you want later, I can tell you how the fragmentation of the regulations-
Well, it's late.
Ca- caused some issues with wind turbines.
Yep.
So I will just say, I enjoyed it, uh, continue, I'd like to continue as a full-time member. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
And you're, you are, you've been going to meetings as a-
Associate.
Associate member, I see.
And can you remind us when, that, that was la- was that last year or the year before?
No, I think my term expires in June.
But when did you start doing that?
Two years ago.
Two years ago, right?
Yeah, right.
Okay, just wanted to get the timeline for that.
Any questions for Mr. Patamos? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next applicant, uh, Mr. Cool. Welcome.
Good evening, Mark Cool, Precinct Six. Um, uh, I'd like to be a permanent member. Uh, 2013 to 2016, I was an associate. Then, from 2016 to 2017, filling, uh, Ralph Hurst's position on the planning board. I was a temporary member of the planning board. I believe I have enough experience, I enjoy the job tremendously. It's unfortunate that Suri's gone, but it would be, um, I would look forward to working with Noreen and the rest of the board members, and, uh, questions?
Sure, questions from members of the board?
Seen Mr. Cool working on the planning board, I know he's very knowledgeable and skilled, so I don't really have any question.
Everybody's kind of a know, we, we, you know, it's not totally new people yet.
Known quantity, and you, have you been attending meetings lately? I know you said you were on planning-
I've been watching the recodification of the zoning bylaw with great enthusiasm, and, because that's necessary, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Next, we have Robert Dugan. Mr. Dugan, welcome.
So I'm the other associate member currently on the board, and I've been, uh, on the board for two years. Um, I've never missed a, uh, application hearing. Uh, I fill in a chairman at times when they need me and, and on full votes. I was appointed the, um, uh, the representative for the accessory apartment working group. And, uh, I'd like to continue going on the board, um, I'm doing all the work, but, you know, you're just not guaranteed that voting position, so that's why I'm seeking the position. We do have a new administrator. It was a big loss when Kim left, you know, for her work obligations. Um, and we'll probably have some new openings, but it, it is important that the openings do get filled, excuse me, um, as quick as possible, only because we are under extreme deadlines with the board. Uh, we don't wanna have any issues with constructive grants. So I'd like your, uh, your vote to be, uh, to take Kim's position.
Thank you for your services. And also, any questions for Mr. Dugan? I also wanna recognize and appreciate the, uh, zoning board members that are here. Thank you for that. Is there someone who's ready to make a motion?
I move that we appoint Jerry Patamos to a term, uh, ending June 30th of 2020?
Is it 20?
I'll pick the second one, 2020.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And I would have a motion, I would appoint, uh, Robert Dugan, um, to a position ending, is it 6/39?
Yes, it is. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Mark.
Well, no, I mean, I think-
There's the associate position.
Right, and I think, you know, s- part of, this is just my, me speaking, not for the board, but I think part of the role of the associate position is to sort of lead into, potentially, it's not a given, but, you know, get that experience. These two individuals have both been going for the last two years, so I think they kind of hit the ground running. It leaves, it then leaves an opening for someone else to kind of move into that, and, um, and that's, you know, my, from my perspective, part of the value of those associate, um, member positions. So it opens up two more spots, potentially, for people.
Very good. Thank you very much. The next item is the Steamship Authority Board of Governors, um, Elizabeth Gladfeller. Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, Betsy Gladfeller, uh, Precinct Six. Would you like, would you like to know why I'd like to do it?
Please, we'll take a, we'll take a minute.
Yeah, we read your, we read all of your stuff, obviously, but, yeah.
Okay, well, well, I'll just very quickly summarize sort of what the, what the major aspects are. Well, why I'd like to do it, why I like to do any of the jobs with town is I like all the people I get to interact with, and I think that's one of the strengths that I bring here. This is a opportunity to, um, uh, represent Falmouth, uh, on a, on a regional committee, and the votes taken in the committee are, uh, to support the organization, the running of the organization. Now, you asked three of the things that I think are most important coming up. One of them, obviously, it's sort of the elephant in the room, is the, uh, terminal reconstruction. And I will tell you, there are a few things that I've been working on that, obviously, I haven't been working on the last couple of months. But, um, one is, I'm actually very disappointed with, um, the effort of the administration, the Steamship administration, in terms of communicating with the town. Uh, we've tried to communicate, uh, on small meetings. I know, Doug, you were, uh, you thought we had, had not reached out, but we did have a meeting just to show the plans to, to Julian and to Sue, and to tell them that we were gonna have a public meeting. However, um, my, those of you who were here that went to that public meeting, it was, I thought it was very disappointing, and I went back, and I explained that. And, um, so it's, I can understand Woods Hole's frustration with its, they had the Coast Guard building, they have the terminal reconstruction, which is a six-to-seven-year project. They're just starting with Woods Hole campus, uh, building, and then it'll be the, the, um, marine reconstruction. There's the, um, dome, what, what's happening with the dome. So it's a little village, and it's really frustrating, and I understand that. One of the things, um, I really try to do, and that I've really enjoyed doing, is that people from all over the town, from different committees and individuals, will either email me, or call me, or will meet, uh, at a coffee shop, where they have suggestions for things that can be done for the Steamship, and I think that's really benefited the town. And in fact, one of the things, a big theme today was, was the history. And one of the groups that I worked with was the Woods Hole Historical, um, Museum, who put the, in the new vessel, the MV Woods Hole, they had the history of Woods Hole on there. Jennifer Gaines and Tom Chilton worked on that project. And the other thing is, recently, uh, Arden Edwards, who designed the original park, by the Steamship Authority, which is going to be a park that's gonna be where the, the, um, bike path ends. She came to me ma- maybe a year ago, and she had some ideas of what could be done with that park, and I've, I've introduced her to Bob Davis, and she will be working with the engineers in designing that park. So there are a lot of things that, that I think are important, um, that can be done for the town by working with the Steamship Authority. Another thing is something I know near and dear to Sue's heart, and that is, uh, electric buses. And I don't know if you've seen it, but there is an electric bus now. It's, it's, have you been on it?
No, but I've seen it.
Yeah, well, come for a ride. Actually, anybody who's been on an airport has been on these buses, but it's, it's kinda cool. And, and one of the neat things is, when you, when you get to the stop, inst- inst- the whole bus goes down, so if you're in a wheelchair, you just roll out. These buses are really expensive. The Steamship Authority will be working with the Cape Cod Transit Authority for some federal funding to, to, uh, defray some of those costs, but I think that, I think it's best for the town, and I think that, uh, the board as a whole will be in favor of that. The other big, uh, issue that's coming up now is the, uh, the report, the consultant's report. And I do wanna say, um, something that I'm concerned with, I know people in Falmouth have been concerned for a number of years, but, um, I really got a good introduction. Every community that's, that's part of this regional board is very different from one another, but I really got a good instructu- a, a good, uh, what's the, what's the word I wanna use? I wanna be as tactful as possible.
Background?
Background, uh, let's say a better understanding of the Martha's Vineyard community, uh, given the problems that we had this year. I mean, it is very frustrating. I told you I lived on islands for a long time. When you, when there are no flights for two weeks, as there weren't after the hurricane, for instance, the hurricanes we had, um, it's, it's very frightening. That said, I think the Steamship Authority really rallied. There were some issues, obviously, but the ridership during that period was 90% of what it would normally be that time of year. They got extra vessels and so forth. However, the, we had a meeting over in Martha's Vineyard where the Martha's Vineyard representative basically started the meeting by slopping down a piece of paper in front of us, and it was a two-page, uh, he had gotten, he had gone out, or people in Martha's Vineyard had gone out and gotten a, a quote from a consulting company for $500,000. Originally, it was 1.5 million. It didn't include marine operations and, um, um, maintenance. That, that would not have been studied. And he almost demanded that we vote for it. And from that point on, and for the next couple of months, I had to remind, um, people several times, and this was not taken kindly over in the Martha's Vineyard meeting, where there were 200 pe- 300 people in the auditorium. I said, "Before we move forward with this, it has to be, this is a study that's for the Steamship as a whole. This is not a Martha's Vineyard study," although they would very much like it to be. However, we have the study, you've probably seen in the paper, that, that, um, a contract will be given to HMS, who did the study, to help the Steamship implement it. Part of the problem is there, and I can't, I know you're all sensitive to selectmen and gender, gender neutral, and I don't know how to say this, how, how do you say manpower in a general, person power? Person power is a problem.
Resources.
Human, human resources. Person power is, is a problem right now with the administration. They're down a few people that they would normally have, they're gonna hire those, they, in the last month, they've been authorized to hire a few more people, but they will be working with HMS, they've, they've, they're hiring HMS to help them implement some of the factors that were in this report. I will say, from the point of view, and if all of you might think of this yourselves, say, say those of you, there are a few of you who are still here from the town of Falmouth, if you're having an outside company come in to evaluate it, that gives a lot of, instills a lot of fear in people. Everybody assumes that they're not gonna like what I'm doing. And so, um, one of the things I like to do is, is talk to people, you know, at the terminals, on the boats, and, and at the administration, and actually, people would call me, too, because they'd be wor- they'd be, they'd worry about this. And my advice to them was, "The results of this report in implementing these things are gonna be better for the Steamship as a whole, and be as honest with them as possible." Don't complain that, this is what happens sometimes, people, people will say to me, "I don't like the fact that I have, that I have to be on a triple crew 'cause I don't get to, to sail as much, or I don't get to ski as much." And I'll say to people like that, I'll say, "Wait a second, how long have you worked here? 25 years? There must be something you like about the job." I said, "Don't give those complaints to the consultants. Use your time to think about what your job is, how things could be improved to make the organization work better." And, and I think that's what the results are gonna be.
Questions for Dr. Gladfeller?
I, I'm wondering how, um, a lot of people have been commenting to me, not the last couple of months, but over the past year or so, when we were having a lot of the, uh, dredging questions and a lot of the issues that were related to the waterfront-
Mm-hmm.
-where you were recusing yourself because of the Conservation Commission job that you're also doing.
Right.
So I'm wondering how you see that going forward? Do you feel like all that's behind us now? Because it seems like there's still a lot more of those type of things coming up.
Well, um, I'll, I'll, I'll give, I'll give you two answers. One is, I recuse myself because that's what I'm required to do. I recuse myself when something comes from, for Hui, also. And, and I wouldn't want you to think that I don't care about the environment, because I have been served on well over a thousand notices of intent. So obviously, I care a lot about the environment. As far, as far about, as far as what's happening down there, they, part of the order of conditions that I've, that I learned after the fact, after, that it was given, is that they have an outside overseer, and, uh, the one time that somebody from Woods Hole called me, and I went down there, and I talked to the, to the person who was in charge, and then I called Bob Davis. So, I mean, I certainly would, you know, try to rectify any decision from the point of view, not from the point of view of being on conservation, 'cause I, I have, I can have nothing to do with that. But from the point of view of the Steamship, the Steamship is responsible for, um, you know, following the regulations. This is a big project.
Right.
And Jen can tell you that big marine projects like this are difficult to do, but, you know, there are conditions, and those conditions have to be met.
Right. But wouldn't we be better off if you were able to really participate on those?
I would not be participating in it. I mean, if there's a viol-
No, but I'm saying, if you, if you weren't doing the Board of Governor job, then you could-
I still wouldn't be participating.
No? Why not?
Because anytime, if there's a violation, the, this, Jen would go down to-
No, but I mean, but as far as participating in writing the decisions and creating the oversight?
Well, it's, they, they have their waterfront permit. I mean, the commissioners don't do oversight on the projects.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, I'm asking about, 'cause I've had a lot of people comment to me that, "Why do we have this conflict?" And is it, is it working?
I, I consider it's working.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dr. Gladfeller? Thank you very much. Next?
Thanks.
James Morris? Mr. Morris, I don't see him.
No, I don't see him.
Catherine Wilson? Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Kate Wilson, I'm from Precinct One. Um, I've never applied for any sort of, uh, appointment such as this, so this is new to me. I'm interested in regional transportation issues and how Falmouth, uh, fits into a bigger picture in terms of the islands and the towns. You have the interest in my questions, so I don't know whether you want me to sort of go through them, or-
I think what, and Betsy kind of alluded to this as well, but, um, the public should know that it, kind of unique to the Steamship position, uh, the town manager's office does, um, in advance, ask a, a couple of specific questions, so maybe you could just highlight, um, your answers to, you know, the, the three or four that you think are most important.
Right. So the questions were the three big issues- So, the questions were the three big issues facing Steamship Authority. And it strikes me that the first one is keeping business going as usual. That safety and reliability are key for the passengers, for the vehicles, for commerce, for everything. And then, the, the next big one is keeping a good, keeping a picture, keeping an eye on the big picture and how the steamship can enhance what it's doing now, and be mindful of going forward and, and what ought to be, what we ought to keep an eye on, whether it's the traffic congestion coming over the bridges, going by the hospital lights, diverting traffic that's coming from New York and Connecticut to the Vineyard, should it go through New Bedford, that type of thing. So, sort of big picture stuff. And then, the third is communication. And there's communication in the event of the, you know, the difficulties with scheduling last year, and the difficulties talking to passengers and that kind of stuff. And then, there's also sort of bigger type of communication with the town, with Falmouth, and how, you know, like with the project going on right now with the terminal, whether, if there had been some earlier conversations or methods for people to share ideas about size, location, and that type of thing, that the steamship might not get into a situation where they've invested a lot of time and resources in creating a plan, that now they're thinking about how maybe they should modify it. So, those were the three big issues that I think are facing Steamship Authority.
What, just a question on, on my part. As an attorney, what do you think that allows you to add to representing the town with the Steamship Authority?
Not, my legal practice itself does not lend it anything in particular to it. It's more my training in terms of being familiar with reading documents, dealing with contracts, considering, well, if there's this sort of issue, then there might be this kind of issue. Being familiar with insurance issues, considering general liability questions, that type of thing.
I have two questions related to that. One is, so often, the Steamship Authority comes back to us and says, "Well, the state, the Enabling Act-"
Right.
"-is what's going to, tells us what we can do and what we have to do." And one question I might have is that a lawyer may be able to look at the Enabling Act and say, "Where is it that we can make some adjustments in that to be able to actually get some leeway?" And the second is, I just get very frustrated, the Steamship Authority often saying, "We don't have to." They sent us a 10-page paper about why they didn't have to pay pilot taxes, why they didn't have to do payments and leave taxes. And they're right, they don't have to, they should. But so often, their answer is, "We don't have to, and we're not going to," when the answer is, "Even though we should." And I'm just wondering, is that something else related to the Enabling Act about them stuck on what we-
I'm interested in it. I mean, most acts and laws go through changes and evolutions. And it's possible that the Enabling Act is ripe for some modifications. It's had modifications in the past. I haven't looked at it carefully enough to have really clear ideas about specifics, but I think it's worth looking at for sure.
Doug?
Are you a strong-willed person when you're making decisions? Like, right now, we've got this HMS report, and one of the primary recommendations is that they consider hiring a chief operating officer. And I attended a meeting last week, and I asked Mr. Davis if he thought that might be because his maritime experience is minimal. I think he's really been mostly an office person, and he did agree with, that's a suspicion. And he is not inclined to be receptive to this COO position. He feels like it's not really needed. And I feel like it's hard to, you know, tell the boss what's needed when he's the boss of the whole place. So, it takes a real strong personality to, to call him out on that. I feel like personally, I'm not a mariner or expert about marine issues, but when I look at all the things that happened this past year, and think to myself, if a guy who really was, worked his way up through the marine part of it, maybe those, some of those things would have been handled differently. So, I'm hoping that people will, will take him to task and really require that these changes be made. I mean, he's kind of accepting some of them, and when I go and watch the Board of Governors meet, they're, I don't see strong willpower on their part about making changes. They're kind of picking away at it, and I don't see a lot of strong leadership there.
Well, there's been the status quo, and unless you get new voices in there, the status quo tends to perpetuate.
Right.
So, I definitely would bring it up.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks for your consideration.
Appreciate it. Sam?
I'd like to move to appoint Elizabeth Gladfelter to a term on the Board of Governors of the Steamship Authority, ending December 31st, 2020.
Is there a second?
We'll second it, and we can discuss it, and-
Yes, I'd be happy to give you my reasoning. I think, given the fact that Falmouth's vote on the Board is minimal, what it requires is somebody who has established mutual respect among the other Board members, who understands where they're coming from, who can put together an argument that basically is going to bring them over to somebody that's in a minority position. And that's, that's a skill, and it requires a huge amount of experience and knowledge in both of the operations, but also those separate communities. That's referred to as referential power in the management theories, rather than organizational power, or line power, as it's sometimes called. And, you know, Betsy, a very articulate person, she's got a wealth of experience. I think Falmouth would not be well-served to bring somebody in that's younger, and I, Kate, I'm sorry, but I think that experience carried over is valuable to the town. We have a hu- huge number of employees of the Steamship Authority that are citizens in this town. We have a lot of people that work on the Vineyard, or who do contract work on the Vineyard. That operation is really important to the vitality of the citizens of Falmouth. And I, I, I think we actually, in terms of maintaining a viable operation, you know, need to respect the fact that Betsy's there. This HMS report calls for changes. My experience is that the kind of changes they're asking for really need to come from within the organization. It's not a top-down thing. You actually literally have to start getting people to take responsibility for the quality of the work that's being done, and you need to draw out of them what it is that they think should happen to make that operation work in a higher, more efficient way. I've been through that process myself, I was impressed. It's not a top-down thing. So, Mr. Davis is probably going to have to loosen up his ear and listen to what's coming out of the organization. But it is a methodology that has worked for corporations across the whole earth. It's a, it's a methodology that was developed by academia in the United States, but it's been applied by the Japanese, and the Koreans, and the Chinese.
Oh, we're getting a little off topic.
Well, but my point is this, that you need somebody that has the insights to be able to support the things that actually are likely to make improvements in the organization. And I think Betsy's experience in that is going to help in that regard. So, that's why I'm nominating her for that position.
Thank you. Doug?
I would certainly concur with Mr. Patterson's statement about the work that Betsy has done and her ability to use that 10% vote and to negotiate and trying to get other people to agree with her. But I'm going to have to echo what Mr. Brown said. I'm really concerned that, one of the reasons I was thrilled to appoint her was because of her conservation side, and to know that she's recusing herself on every conservation issue concerns me greatly not to have Falmouth's voice involved deeply in those conversations and discussions. And so, I guess I'm really leaning much more that not to have to continue with that, because we can't have Falmouth's voice in conservation discussion.
Sam?
Well, I'm liaison to the Conservation Commission. I think Betsy kind of addressed this, but once the conditions have been established, it's really up to staff to enforce those conditions.
I'm talking about the discussions at the Steamship Authority. She has to recuse herself on any steamship board discussion dealing with conservation.
No, that's not approved.
No, no, not, Betsy.
Or anything in Falmouth. She has to recuse herself on Falmouth issues on conservation, and it-
That's not, that's not how it works. This has to do with sitting on the board and carrying out deliberation and acting on decisions. That's when you recuse yourself. It doesn't mean that you can't be actively involved in the quality assurance of the organization.
If it's dealing-
Taking information in, passing it on. I mean, I do that as a selectman. I don't tell staff what to do, but I listen to staff, other staff members, and when I see an issue in the organization, I take them to Julie and then Peter.
But if the discussions happening in the Board of Governors about Falmouth, conservation issue in Falmouth, she can, she recuses herself from that conversation, and I'm not comfortable with that.
But, but she's not the enforcer.
I'm not looking for enforcement on Falmouth. I'm looking for the Board of Governors' discussion of the issues. And that's the reason why I was happy to appoint her, so that we would have the conservation side actually at the Board of Governors' meeting. And she and I disagree as to whether she needs to recuse herself. I don't see it as a conflict of interest, because there's no personal benefit to her as a conservation person by discussing it, but I know that she feels like-
I guess the question I have is, in terms of the time that, that this representative puts in on the Board, how much of it is actually dealing with those kind of conservation issues? We have other people who are monitoring that process. I don't see that as the Board's responsibility.
I, I think you both made good points. Any other discussion? So, there's a motion for Dr. Gladfelter, and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
One. Okay. Next, is there another motion?
I would move to appoint Catherine Wilson to the term ending 12/31/20.
Is there a second?
I'll second that as well.
Any discussion?
I don't know what type of legal work she does, and it was very candid of her to say that her legal work might not be helpful, but I just find lawyers to be very convincing in discussions many times. I don't know, I'd like to give that a try. I, I know that these people that they're dealing with are very, they've been at this a long time, and they've seen a lot of Board members come and go. And I would like to see a new, a new sense of urgency on their part to, to make some changes that haven't ever been made.
I, I kind of want to echo something that's already been said. With respect to advocacy and training as a lawyer, the, right now, with all of the really turning upside down of the administration and management and just overall operations of the Steamship Authority, at a time when there are, there are, you know, important projects that, and customer service issues that will be ongoing, there are going to be, you know, a lot of demands. At the same time, there, the enabling legislation has been of concern, and it's been kind of called up in the past in terms of, you know, should there be changes? Does it serve the initial purpose? They're, you know, considering the, the passage of time. Are there other needs that should be reviewed? And I think a lawyer will be helpful when that question comes up in terms of the enabling legislation, and, and sort of discussing that and having a direct view of how any such changes might affect the operations.
Megan?
I guess, this may be a completely inappropriate way to look at it, but this is, this is how I'm looking at it. But I think that the Steamship Authority, sort of as an institution, it's not, it's not directed at any one individual, but as an institution, is very comfortable that things generally go in the direction that they're, they're trying to go for many reasons. Lots of different, you know, pressure points and, and different leverage that they either actually have or feel they have. And I think that at this point in time, the projects that they're involved in, the way that some of those projects have been rolled out, I think that there is a need for a little bit of discomfort, or newness, or, you know, and it doesn't speak to the role of, and this is why I say, maybe it's the wrong way to look at it, but it doesn't speak to necessarily the role of the, the person that's in there, but it, it's a statement to the Steamship Authority that there is some, you know, displeasure, or maybe some, you know, critique of the way things have gone on a number of issues, and that, you know, this, this Board in this town is looking to kind of send that, that message that where we want this to be a partnership, but we want it to be something that's a little bit more, you know, on equal footing, where the concerns that this Board hears, and I know Betsy heard for, you know, all the time that she served, over and over again, from individuals that live in this community, primarily in Woods Hole, but not just Woods Hole, certainly, that those concerns, as much as we raise them, don't get sort of the traction that we want them to. And so, I see, for me, this vote as a message really to the steamship that we are, you know, we're looking, you know, for there to be just a different way of, of engaging on some of these issues. I think, you know, that Sam's point about the, the depth of knowledge, the institutional knowledge, the personal relationships that Betsy brings to that are significant, and the, you know, that firsthand knowledge of how all of it operates and of the area of Woods Hole, I mean, certainly of the environmental pieces, whether she recuses herself or not, I mean, that all has a value. I see this vote as something that's more of a message from this Board to the Steamship Authority, it, during a very pivotal time of growth and redevelopment for them.
Any further discussion in that case?
By the way, I would just say, I think that's a naive thing, to think that making this change is going to have any resonance at all.
Well, then, why do we vote anybody? I mean, I mean, you know-
No, no, no. I told you why. And you actually just repeated it. That's why I was in favor of Betsy, rather than bringing somebody in new. But, all right. You guys have made the decision.
All those in favor of Kate Wilson?
Aye.
Aye, four. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gladfelter, for your service. It's been tremendous. Kate Wilson, good luck, and congratulations. Apologize for all the petitioners. Thank you for staying. It's been a busy agenda. We have next the presentation of petition articles for April 2019 Town Meeting. There is an end limit of five minutes each. Mr. Potamus. Petition, Article 21.
Everybody want to stand up and stretch to wake up? This is the most important part.
No, we don't even want to take time for that.
Okay.
We're going to press on.
Yes, okay. As you all know, and this is a recap for you as well as maybe the citizens, the existing, that's all right, it's, we're taking precious time. The existing overlay district says if you have up to four bedrooms, you convert two of them to a accessory apartment. However, folks in the coastal pond overlay, Little Pond area and things like that, if they want to go to a fifth bedroom, they need to either tie into the sewer, which they have to, if, even if they put five or six in, assuming there's capacity, but they have to put an onsite enhanced system in. That, in my mind, is not right. So, the petition article is simply removing the term enhanced, and I think you'll see the reasons why. It's fairness to the elderly, the low income, or moderate income, and the younger people that want to move in there. It's environmentally sustainable. People to say one extra bedroom or two extra bedrooms is going to kill the pond, I'd like to talk to them. That number you see there with all the zeros, that's the concentration increase adding one bedroom into Oyster Pond. It's got something like seven million liters. No one can measure that in the field. So, it is ridiculous to assume we're going to kill the ponds or violate CWMPs by adding, you could add 10 bedrooms and it wouldn't matter. It's going to take three to five years for the town to get the state to approve a better system, enhanced system. That's 50 systems. It's going to take a while. The key is that, the other thing is, the Board of Health is the gatekeeper. Until such time as we have an enhanced system defined, the Board of Health can look at these on a case-by-case basis and say, "You know, we may have too much growth going on. We should require enhanced maintenance." As the article reads now, they have to require- Now, I don't think there's gonna be unbridled growth of accessory apartments, so I don't really think this is gonna be needed, and I think the Board of Health can check that. It improves the neighborhood. If people look at the amount of money people are putting in to upgrade these houses, I will assert that for every one I've seen, and the ones I've seen go in front of the planning board, it's an actual improvement to the house. People wanna increase market rate or they want it to be a nice place. And the other thing, it avoids twenty to thirty thousand dollars to put in an enhanced system plus a thousand dollars annually to maintain it. And yes, there are some systems that Judge Royfelder's recommending that may reduce those costs, but those are still three to five years away, and you still have to tear up your entire backyard to put in the layering system. I hope I didn't take up more than five years.
Did very well. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions?
We're not really doing questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Really, no, we'll do that on Town Meeting floor.
It's too late.
Thank you. Next, we have petition, Article 22, John Banner. Mr. Banner, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm petitioning Article 22 concerning the accessory apartment bylaw. The apartment bylaw was originally passed in the spring of 2017 Town Meeting. The intent of the, of the bylaw was to broaden the range of, broaden the range of housing choices in Falmouth by increasing the number of small dwelling units available for rent, encourage greater diversity of population, particular attention to young adult citizens, allowing for aging in place for our senior citizens, promote more economic and energy-efficient use of the town's housing supply, all this while maintaining the appearance and character of the town's single-family neighborhoods. So this is the wording that was in there for the bylaw. Last November, Town Meeting voted to amend the accessory apartment bylaw based on recommendations by a working group made up of members from Planning, Zoning, Affordable Housing, and several other town departments. One of the major amendments was to introduce the minimum lot size of seventy-five hundred square feet, whereas the original bylaw had no minimum lot size. Based on the working group's comments at the Town Meeting, justification for seventy-five hundred square feet, minimum lot size was that smaller than seventy-five hundred square feet would not work. It'd be too small to accommodate an accessory apartment and/or its sewage disposal requirements. What perhaps the working group overlooked was that the majority of approximately eight hundred single-family house lots on Mare Vista Peninsula are less than seventy-five hundred square feet, and thus are now excluded from the accessory apartment opportunity based on last November's revision. Mare Vista is an ideal community for accessory apartments as it's now connected to Town Sewer, its walking distance to shopping centers and Main Street, and its walking distance to the Heights Beaches. To prove the concept, I hired a surveyor and an architect to draw plans to put an accessory apartment on my seventy-two hundred square foot Mare Vista lot, and it meets all the criteria except for the minimum lot size requirement. So this proposal to amend the bylaw to read, "The lot size shall be no less than seven thousand square feet, will not only benefit the majority of Mare Vista residents, but it will enable residents throughout the town with lot sizes of seven thousand plus square feet to consider adding an accessory apartment."
Thank you very much. Next, we have Article 23, Mark Fineran.
Mark Fineran, my article is much the same as his, and I was going to amend this last year at, or last fall at Town Meeting, but the amendments got used up between Jerry and Jim Fox back and forth. So when I tried to amend, as I said, they were used up. But, and my amendment is to add in Section 3, seven thousand square feet lot size in sewer service areas. And if you recall through the years of the Wastewater Committee, we were told dozens of times that the houses that hitch up in the Little Pond Sewer Service Area would be allowed to have accessory apartments. The biggest problem in this town and with the lot size is nitrogen. There's absolutely no nitrogen released in, into the ground if, if you're hitched to the sewer. So I kind of fully expected that this would have been addressed by the planning board, and I'd just withdraw it, but it, it didn't. And as I said, I mean, i- if you go back and look, or if you can remember through the Wastewater presentations, I mean, we're told literally dozens of times that the people, once the people hitch up to the sewer, they'd be able to have accessory apartments. I mean, Eric said so, Virginia said so, and I mean, it was just, it was obviously overlooked. The difference between our articles is, is he wants to apply it all over town. I'm not sure that is correct due to, you know, nitrogen loading. But I, I really see no reason to exclude all the people on Mare Vista from having an accessory apartment when they're, they're, they're gonna add absolutely nothing to the, to the nitrogen. And there are still a lot of two-bedroom dwellings on Mare Vista. There's a lot of retired people on Mare Vista who really could use these desperately. I mean, it's, it would be the only thing in many cases that would keep them in their homes, and that's basically it. I, I think it was just an oversight. And if you, if you put it all together, I mean, it really, it, it should be allowed.
Not really a question on either of the petition articles, but from the last Town Meeting, this board has undergone a lot of efforts to have Town Meeting run a little more smoothly, including petitioner's articles, and I'm just curious if the two of you have finished talking.
I, I haven't met him yet, but I think, you know, I think-
It's kind of rhetorical, but-
Oh, no, I, I fully intend, I didn't know who he was, and I, I fully intend to speak with him, and I, I think mine's a better article, but, you know, whatever. You know, because there's gonna be some pushback having the thing seven thousand all over town. I mean, you, you know that's the case.
Thank you, Megan.
Just to that, and it's not to Mark's petition, but to that point, I just really encourage folks to do, you know, that legwork before Town Meeting to talk to, if they need to talk to Town Council, if they need to talk to a particular department, planning or whatever, to make sure we have those answers on Town Meeting floor or as much in advance as we can, because it really was something that I think tripped up even some potentially good articles last year that just weren't well explained and well presented. So there really is a value in making sure that i's are dotted and t's are crossed for folks who are bringing petitioner's article. Not just folks, everybody, but-
Thank you, Mark.
Articles, period.
I know Mr. Halen was not able to come tonight. Is there someone who is presenting Article 24 for him? Because we asked him to send an emissary if he could. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to Article 25, Dan Webb. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, Dan Webb, Precinct 6. I have a brief PowerPoint if that could be queued up.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, stop.
Yeah, that's it. Let's see if I have five words. Yes. Okay. Can I advance slides? Thank you for the opportunity to present this tonight. Dan Webb, Precinct 6. Not off to a good start here.
Happened earlier, too.
Came right back, though. I just hit the advance arrow and the screen went blank.
Try hitting the keyboard, the advance on the keyboard.
Okay, let's try that. Thank you. The purpose of Article 25 is to amend the zoning bylaws to support and facilitate, not to mandate, the adoption of solar energy as part of the Planning Board's site plan review criteria. Here's the text of the article. It would modify Chapter 240, zoning, Article 23, performance requirements, site design, deserves little explanation, so we'll, we'll delve into that. I'd like to point out that this concept is entirely consistent with existing approved town policies. The local comprehensive plan, energy element, was adopted at Town Meeting in April 2013. It includes, "This statement, public policy will strongly support the use of appropriate renewable energy resource, renewable energy sources." That local comprehensive plan also includes an action item which specifically referred to revising the zoning bylaws to change the site plan review process regarding solar. So this is not a, not an entirely new concept. The current site plan review criteria is a laundry list of different bylaws with different criteria, including dimensional regulations, areas of critical environmental concern, coastal ponds, parking, performance requirements, landscape requirements, automobile regulations. So what we're gonna be talking about is these performance requirements that are in Section And here they are. There are eight of them. They're lettered A through H. I've split them onto two slides. The language of this bylaw is so tortured, you have to read it about twenty times to understand what it's really saying. So I highlighted what really is the gist of the first sentence. And so to, the way to make sense of that is to read the highlighted part. "Any new building shall be so designed that the design could not be reasonably altered to." So I think what that's really saying is, here's a list of things that we want to be considered or optimized in designs. Items A through H. And this article proposes to add a ninth criteria, I. Let's go to the next slide. So here they are, D through H, the existing ones in blue, and the proposed one in red. So let's just take a look at this for a moment. What does this really mean? So for instance, existing item E has to do with reducing the removal of trees. So that says that criteria, the Planning Board would be looking for plans that are thoughtful in terms of tree removal. It's not saying you can't remove any trees. It's saying you need to do so in sort of an optimized manner. Item F, reduce the volume of cut or fill. Doesn't say you can't have any cut or fill. It says your design needs to take those into account. So proposed item I, which is the heart of this article, says, "Improve the collection of solar energy by photovoltaic and/or hot water systems." We're not saying you have to do solar. We're saying your design should take it into account. It's one of the attributes that a good design would include. Maybe the, maybe the developer of the property or the building, maybe they're not gonna put solar on it first, but maybe ten years later, maybe some other owner is going to add the solar, and they'll benefit from the fact that the design was optimized for that at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great. Next, we have petition, Article 29, Mark Fineran.
Mark Fineran again, Precinct 6, and this article's coming back again. It's for the second water meter in the sewer service area. It was pretty close last time, and I gave you a presentation. I did the, all the towns in Massachusetts that begin with L, and I couldn't find one that didn't make an allowance for either a second water meter, or in the case of one town, they just used a formula where they discounted your water rate. I'll put a little bit more into it this time. I'll probably pick another letter and go through it, and I'm sure I'm gonna find the exact same thing. I've been approached by a couple of the neighborhood associations, and they don't particularly appreciate the way their water's getting billed out, and as I said before, I, I honestly question the legality of this, charging two different rates for the same product. It's, just isn't right. And I plan on having a roll call vote, so be honest with you, people can see what neighbor voted to charge them double for their water. That's simple.
Thank you. Next, we have Article 30, Paul Dryer.
Need a hand, Paul? It'll be on the desk, it should be on the desktop.
If you close that window out, yep.
It's on the screen. Yeah. Seems to have to close the app, but that's the quickest way to do it. Should be up top there. Chivik Pond? Yeah, thank you. Good evening, thank you. My name is Paul Dryer. I'm here as a Town Meeting member from Precinct 2, and I'm also representing the Chivik Pond Working Group. This is historic pond in Falmouth. These postcards from a hundred years ago. Where's Chivik Pond? Just north of Kathy Lee Bates Road, between Lawrence School and Mullen School. I'm sure you know where it is. A working group was formed in September of last year to develop a phased action plan for educational, recreation, public safety project. We carefully picked people who were involved in the project and had a great deal of interest from the three hundred, and you can see the names there, from the three hundred committee, conservation committee, recreation, planning board, Rotary, Lawrence School, Falmouth DPW, and Town Meeting member. There's some pictures of Falmouth. The one on the lower left is where there is not a sidewalk on Kathy Lee Bates. The last one, you can see, you can't even see the pond. Project development, concept paper was presented to the Board of Selectmen in August of 2014. That's four and a half years ago. There was a lot of interest at that time. Three hundred committee purchased a small triangle piece of land that was a remnant from the construction of Kathy Lee Bates Road many years ago. So that completes the ownership around the pond. McMahon Traffic Report encouraged the continuing the path to provide pedestrian connection between town and satellite parking. CPC funded a environmental baseline study a year and a half ago. Nothing was done on that, and so the working group was organized September to prepare this phased action plan. The summary of the phase one elements are three. Viewing platform. The first line is what the issue is. It's a liability and safety issue. What are we doing about it? Prepare permitting and design for a platform. And the intent would have an ADA accessible walkway from a trail to a tall by twenty-foot platform pilings in the pond. Second element was vista pruning. You can't see the pond in many cases, although the town has cut, has done this work previously. Selected to remove invasive plants, and we're recommending nine hundred feet along Kathy Lee Bates Road, nine hundred feet on the east side. And the last item was the Kathy Lee Bates sidewalk. It's a dangerous situation for pedestrian pair, and students, and what we'd like to do is prepare the permit and coordinate with DPW in road and drainage improvements that they've scheduled for later this year. So we're talking about approximately a thousand feet of sidewalk on the north side of Kathy Lee Bates to connect the two schools and improve that area. If the town is moving forward with this improvement to Kathy Lee Bates as proposed for later this year, this would fit in nicely with that, so it's a coordination effort. Where it's located, the existing trail is on the right. You can see the platform would be on the lower left-hand side, west side, sidewalk, vista pruning. Couple more pictures of it, as you can see on the lower left, you can't even see the pond. And it is still used for recreational area, although the act- And it is still used recreational area, although the access is limited. Timeline, the safety and liability issues need to be addressed. Design permits, if that, if we can get the funding now, we can prepare the design and submit an application to CPC for funding by the deadline in August for consideration of funding by town meeting in spring of next year. Coordination project with DPW will maximize, will minimize the overall cost of the project. And the drainage permits, we want to do as part of that with direct flows away from the pond, which will improve the ecology of the pond and eliminate the flooding problems on that area. There's a public benefit project for the reasons I show there, and benefits are there. You can read them, you know what they are. I won't take the time going through them, but there's a lot of benefits for this. Estimated cost of forty thousand dollars. There's extensive support from all the people and many others. Please support the article.
Thank you very much. Great. Next we have petition, Article thirty-one, Ron Zweig. Hi. Oh, sure, sure. Mr. Johnson, stop, thank you.
There's your US speaker. Thank you very much. Ron Zweig, precinct one, town meeting member, water quality management committee member as well. Article thirty-one is basically a follow-on to another article that was passed unanimously at town meeting in the fall of twenty sixteen to do water quality monitoring of a shellfish aquaculture activity in Bournes Pond. And the, 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 basically, we're at, the article's asking again for seventy-five thousand dollars for about, for monitoring and some support to the marine environmental services department to continue the, the activity. So the, what happened was that in twenty seventeen, when the work was to be done, there was a, for some reason, technical reasons, they decided not to do it that year. So it was just done this past summer, twenty eighteen. So that seventy-five thousand was used then. DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection, requires three years of evaluation before they will basically allow, an allowance for nitrogen removal or nitrogen credit to meet a TMDL in ponds. To give an idea though, this is sort of the, the area, the main project area that this Bournes Pond is, is, well, it's noted there, basically, in the pink, that watershed. It is one of the watersheds in, in the south coast area. And all the water, all of the estuaries there are impacted for nitrogen, excessive nitrogen. And when you look at the, what's required, basically, right now, there, there are so many households and the main thrust of things at the moment is to sewer the area. And by searing the area, we'd have to basically take care of all of these, these homes. The, there are, there are a few other alternatives. The backyard innovative and alternative systems are, can be applied possibly just to more of an extent in, in Wacoit East where the houses are less densely together. But when you look at this number, there's like fourteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-two properties that would be have, need to be managed in this area. That's huge. And even if you put in IA systems, I mean, the total number of IA systems on Cape Cod is about fifteen hundred. So if we put in five thousand even, that'd be a huge number and it's very complex undertaking. And the cost of that is, to do this, is still in the six hundred and ten to seven hundred and thirty million dollar range to do this, basically, to resolve the problem in that area. So the notion is now, how can we reduce that? The Bournes Pond inlet widening does help. It reduces it by roughly ten million out of these figures. Ten million is what the inlet widening does. So when we start looking at, at options and what's going on, the same company that we worked, that our consultant in Falmouth, GHD, did an assessment in Mashpee. And from that assessment, there, if they did all searing for what they needed for their watersheds, it would be three hundred and sixty million dollars. But they put in a shellfish component to be looked at, that the DEP has basically warranted to them to demonstrate that it, that it will work. And if it works conservatively, it would save a hundred and forty million dollars out of three hundred and sixty, let's say a third roughly. So that's, that, there is tremendous potential following with the aquaculture. So in this relatively small article, like, I mean, this looks at basically the number of shellfish and the different embayments in Mashpee. And, but then it gets down to the specifics that GHD did. And again, it comes up with these figures that the bottom line is, is like two hundred and twenty million versus three hundred and sixty billion, so two hundred and twenty million with shellfish. So I think it's well worth it for us to pursue this in Falmouth in the style, the approach here is different than in Mashpee to a large extent. And so, so basically strongly recommending that the town consider this. Now, the reason I'm saying postponed decision right now is that we expected the S Mass report last month to give us the results from the last summer's thing. It will be apparently delivered and presented on the twenty-first. And I don't know when you make a decision on these, probably in two weeks from now or sometime. But it might be that I'll try, I'll get the information to you between now and then because we really want to see how well it, the approach worked out.
Thank you.
So basically, that's it, thank you.
Terrific, thank you very much. Great. Next we have on the agenda, minutes of meetings, the public session for January twenty-eight, two thousand nineteen. Not ready yet. In which case we'll go right to individual selectman reports. Mr. Brown.
Well, me, myself and Peter and Judy met again to chip away at the committee handbook, which is like a pretty big project. And we got to spend a little bit more time in longer periods, but we're still working on it. Went to the Water Quality Management Committee meeting this week. Very interesting discussion about discharge options. And I was very interested to learn that it's actually less expensive to discharge the wastewater, the treated wastewater at Knobsko than it is to discharge in West Falmouth. Because the Knobsko discharge option only goes out into the bay a thousand feet or so. And the one in West Falmouth has to go twice or more. And the marine portion of the construction is the very expensive part. So that was interesting. Sixty-three million if we want to go that way, and seventy if we want to go that way. And there's a lot of land-based options that are fairly effective, many of which surprised me how, how much work they could do as far as reaching our future searing needs for the Green Pond and Grape Pond with much less expense. But then it doesn't take into account the whole future spectrum of what we might need to do overall. So I'm still hopeful that the outfall will work, but we'll see.
Great.
I also attended another smart Woods Hole meeting with the SSA to discuss the orientation and the construction of the terminal building. And we talked about the fact that currently they have this long, wide building with a very large expansive roof facing people as they're coming down Woods Hole Road. And I asked them to consider a more narrow, compact building, turned the other way with two and a half stories. I said, if you get two and a half stories, you've got a lot more space. And I was very encouraged at the end of the meeting that they seemed to be listening. You never can tell. And then afterwards, after the Water Quality Management Committee meeting was over, Eric Turkington said he thinks that there's a very good chance that they're going to consider it. So I'm hoping they will.
Awesome, thank you. Sam.
I've attended the finance committee meetings over the last couple of weeks. They're working through the budget. No big changes there, so it's just a methodical process. But I think they seem to be pretty happy with the budget book as it's been presented by the finance director and all of the people that support her. I attended along with Sue, the police department's induction and recognition ceremonies, which was really neat. Well, I think we really are well-served by our police department and seeing those individual officers get recognition for kind of going beyond their normal routines is a pretty good indication that their hearts are in it and they're willing to go that extra mile.
Thank you for doing that. I wanted to go, but I'm working in Plymouth and it's difficult, those morning meetings.
I understand, I understand. The last thing is I attended the Cape Cod Selectmen and Counselors Association meeting on Friday. It was at the, in Hyannis. Time was basically spent looking at this whole rooms tax revenue that's going to be generated and what the towns need to be doing to prepare for receiving it. Because it's going to go into the general fund if they don't create stabilization funds that are targeted to actually hold it in reserve until you have a chance to actually, you know, invest it in wastewater treatment. So the concern was how to handle the transfer of funds so it doesn't just get thrown into the general fund and used for whatever reason.
For that, for that specific two point seven five portion?
Yes. And, and if you choose to put any more of the, you know, like we voted for a five percent. If you want to put some fraction of that into that same wastewater treatment. Because I think in, in general, we'd like to see more money being invested in that sort of. But the counting needs to be set up and it usually requires a town meeting vote to establish these special reserve or stabilization accounts. So basically, talk about how to prepare for when those funds start coming, which will be in July one, you know. So we may not be able to do anything until November, but it's something that needs to be on the radar screen. I haven't talked to Jennifer Petit about it, but I'm sure she's, you know, collaborating with her colleagues across the state and tried to, or across the Cape, I should say, and the islands, to figure out how they're going to actually handle that transaction. I think we need to be alert to the fact that the money could just flow into the general fund if we don't target it in a way that makes sense.
We have to reappropriate.
Exactly. But anyway, it's just how to handle it. There's not an exact algorithm at this point, but we need to be worried about those issues.
Thank you, Ms. Braga.
Just briefly, Solid Waste Advisory Committee last week met. Peter Johnson Staub was there, as was Peter McConerty. And they spent a lot of time talking about something they've spoken about for a while now, which is applying for a grant through the state to see if we can get some assistance doing some education and really some enforcement around recycling. They voted as a board unanimously to make that recommendation to this board. I presume we'll have that on the agenda to look at in coming months. But it's a pretty big step for them. They've talked about it for a while and they've gotten a lot, they've done a copious amount of research. And it was great for, I think, Peter and Peter to both be there to answer some kind of practical questions and to give some food for thought to the committee about the issue. But, you know, something that we'll, we'll see from them in coming months, I think.
Great. I think it's worth mentioning again, the award ceremony that Chief Dunn does with the police department, particularly this year with the incredibly scary events with the shootings and, and really reflecting three sixty on the day-to-day bravery of every single officer in the department. It was just a really nice opportunity to say thank you and we appreciate you and made even more so this year. The Board of Selectmen, as you all know, as a part of strategic planning, a year or two ago asked the town manager to really beef up into a really, sort of a concrete manner, the appreciation of all town employees. And that was done, you know, with the administrative offices already and now the police department. And we're moving this week on to public work. So I just really think it was great to see a couple of the employees really pleased with the, and proud of the recognition. I know some friends were there, certainly the police department families. And just a really nice thing with all the demands that we put on folks that work for the town and the customer service and the great effort that we get. It's just great to, to see that being recognized. So kudos, and it was a great experience.
I'll go, town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I was pleased to attend this past Tuesday's finance committee meeting once again. I try to attend regularly and assist with questions as they arise. They'll meet again tomorrow night. On Thursday evening, the Route twenty-eight Citizens Advisory Committee meeting continued and I was pleased to attend that. They will be taking a two- to three-week breather as the, their general recommendations were completed in draft form and are going to the consultant for reworking the plans to return to them either at the end of this month or the first week of March. So they're making great progress and my compliments to that committee for their thoughtful work. And also to Public Works Director Ray Jack for his assistance with that process. I also, Doug Brown referred to the Water Quality Management Committee's recent meeting and I was pleased to attend that as well and hear their comments on wastewater discharge options. On Friday morning, I met with other Cape, upper Cape managers, representatives of Joint Base Cape Cod and others in the state regional compact grant exploring the wastewater collaboration process. That's ongoing in, in furtherance of a, this recent grant recently received. And also, I recently joined in a meeting in the Harbor Masters office with staff members from Cape Cod Commission, Tom Planter, Tom Bott, MES Director Greg Fraser, and others for a presentation by the Cape Cod Commission staff on a regional harbor assessment initiative. We had asked that the town of Falmouth be included. We were pleased that that was, is the case. The communities are Chatham, Dennis, Falmouth, and Provincetown in this study. Its purpose is to identify and where possible quantify the various economic activities associated with harbors on Cape Cod relative to the cost of maintaining the harbors, assess threats to harbor viability, and the net benefits of continued operations. So we look forward to this unfolding and collaboration with Falmouth staff and the Cape Cod Commission staff. And I understand the final report should be expected within about twelve months. And that concludes my report, except for one other item. Monday is President's Day and the town, major town administrative offices town hall will be closed as a result. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, stop.
Senior Center Building Committee and, and project team continue to make good progress. We recently had a series of recommendations, our first set of proposed change orders, which I thought the process worked really well in terms of the architect and the owner's project manager, working with the general contractor to get good pricing, understand, scope the issues. OPM is representing us well to make sure that, that the pricing offered by the general contractor is, is not inflated and is appropriate. And then the committee, for its part, really taking its role seriously, looking at the overall budget context in, in acting on, making recommendations on these proposed change orders. And it gets complicated, you know, budgeting isn't necessarily complicated, but you get into these timing questions of, well, these, you know, there's some things that you might want to do if you could wait until later in the project, but sometimes you don't have that luxury. But anyway, the committee made a series of recommendations. The town manager accepted those recommendations and I think, I think those were sound process and really good decisions that were made. And lastly, I had met with the Shellfish Advisory Committee and we are working on an approach that's fairly novel and a little bit complicated in how we form sort of a joint partnership with the aquaculture growers and the licensing that involves the town and individual growers and may involve a procurement process as well. So that will be heading the board's way sooner rather than later.
Right.
Can I ask a couple of questions about the senior center since I was, didn't get to go to the meeting?
One.
One, are we going to have a generator for the whole building? Is that now one of those changes?
We will not have a generator. We will have the, we will have a generator hookup.
Okay. And is there any start date for the framing?
I, yes, but off the top of my head, I don't remember that.
All right.